So three, I am calling the meeting to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Here.
DePena.
Here.
Graziano.
Here.
Notari.
Here.
Rovell.
Here.
Trumalob Burke.
Present.
Mayor Mountain.
Here. Sunshine notice?
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this meeting was published in the Thursday, December 24th, 2020 additions of the Bevel Times and Star Ledger. In an effort to prevent further spread of the COVID-19 pandemic, public meetings have been changed to Zoom. A copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the Bevel Town Hall bulletin board and copies are on file in the municipal clerk's office.
Pledge allegiance?
I believe.
To the flag, United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, ever changing, just for all.
Okay.
Okay, so my agenda has an executive session anyway, so with in a minute or so, I'm going to entertain a motion to go into executive session. I will see some new faces here today, so I give the same disclaimer all the time. In a moment, the council or I will entertain a motion to move to executive session. We will get a second on that and we'll go to a vote. We will then leave this room here. For this, we're in person. Room and we stay. However, since we're virtual, we will all go into an extra breakout room. As far as the general public is aware, you guys just sit tight here. We're going to leave. We should be no more than five or 10 minutes according to the manager, and then we're going to come back in here. Absolutely. No action, no votes, nothing will be taken while we're in executive session. We're just going to literally leave here, come back and rejoin you all in about, I want to say maybe 10 minutes or so. So without further ado, everybody stay here. After I get a motion and a second and we vote, council members, any member of the administration is going to get a link to a breakout room. Hit that link and we're going to exit this room into a private room. So can I get in motion to go into executive session? Mr. Manager, what is the reason for?
Oh, moved. Uh, ongoing litigation.
Okay, we're going to go into executive session to discuss ongoing litigation. No action will be taken. I heard a motion to go. I need a second.
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 And a motion made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Councilmembers, click the link. Members of the administration, click the link. If you are an attorney that's going to be updating us, click the link. Okay, we are still in our meeting, everybody, so we are going to move forward now. I think if you're patient, you've now learned that five-minute executive session is really 20. Twenty-minute executive session is really an hour, but we're going to move forward with the next portion of our meeting, which is the report of the manager. Mr. Manager, the floor is yours. Please unmute yourself.
Nope, you're muted.
You're muted.
Still muted.
Still muted.
No, I'm not. You can hear me now, right? Yeah, but you're sharing our Facebook page.
Yes.
Okay, hang on, hang on.
Boy, that's a busy screen.
Don't make us lose you.
Hold on.
Might want to unshare it so you find the right screen. Okay.
Hey Hank.
Can you unmute me for one second? Your five minutes is almost up.
I know, I know. Jackie, did you un, um? Jackie's fault now.
What weight are they on? Because then I had to go to the other screen.
Somebody's not muted.
Oh, okay.
But they're, uh, they're cleaning the mats.
Yes, I know. I can see it. Okay.
Remind everybody to mute your phones, please. We hear you all speaking.
What weight did they start with? Heavyweights, because I saw a lot of heavy people there.
We're hearing somebody speak. I'm going to end your call to mute your phones, please.
We just mute them?
We're trying to.
Okay.
So I'm going to give, I'm going to give the manager's report. Unfortunately, whatever I did on my shared screen didn't work. I had a, a beautiful color rendering that we will have for the next meeting, so everybody can see the, Green Acres Stadium Improvement Project that we are passing tonight. It's a $5 million project. $2 million is coming strictly in a, in a form of grant for Green Acres. It comes with eight, um, height, eight, um, track lanes. There's a big difference between eight and six. And the difference between eight and six is that we could actually host regionals. And not only can we host regionals, but we could actually, that, that, that will actually generate revenue. So we're always thinking about new ideas, but if we host, regional track tournaments and, and meets with an eight-lane track, we actually will be paid to use our facility. So it's, it's additional revenue in the future. There's, there's also another ordinance tonight for $590,000 to replace and improve all the LED lighting up at the stadium. Again, we're working very closely with the Board of Education to come to an agreement. That there will be, that they were incurred a debt for us. It would be a basically almost like a shared agreement that we're both using the field and both chipping in. Again, there's the existing football field, which has turf on it now. That turf gets replaced. There's a completely new corner diamond, what we refer to as the northeast corner diamond. That's, uh, it, it works excellent for seven and seven soccer. And there's a baseball and softball field that it's about 280 yards. And then there's also the, what we call the dust bowl, the old practice field. That gets all-new carpet and that's where the track goes around the new field. We have contracts in place. We have the ordinance resolutions in place to award. We have a pre-construction meeting set. We have the Board of Education members, I'm sorry, the team from the Board of Education, which we think we could do this without any interruption of high school graduation in June. We think we could do this without any interruption with the football field. So we could actually get to the portion of the existing football field somewhere around the last week in June, if everything goes according to plan. So we don't, we don't ruin high school graduation and at the same time, we could be ready for September, mid-September first home ga, football game on the new turf. So we think that this total project will be completed hopefully by the end of October, November of 2021. So we're pretty very, very excited about this. This project's been planned for a while and we have all the mechanisms in, in place. So we're very, very happy about that. Some housekeeping.
Hey, through the, through the chair, just a quick question to the manager. Is that okay?
Sure.
Now, now this, this really has no impact on our, on our current budget, right?
This is. No, this, this $5 million project has zero impact on this year's budget. The bond that we're using of, on the $3 million is a previous year bond. So that 5% has already been incorporated into a previous year budget. And of course, when you spend Green Acres grant, it's actually a grant from Green Acres. So this $5 million will have zero, zero impact on the municipal budget.
Do we, do we have any idea about that 3.4 for the stimulus package? Can that be used for Green Acres, for any of that kind of things like this to help us with the stadium at all?
Yeah, so we actually spoke to Joe Ficcone this afternoon. He actually sat through two seminars, webinars, Zoom meetings. There are, there's, there's quite a few unanswered questions. So the good news is that Bevel is earmarked for $3.4 million. We haven't gotten that money yet, and we also haven't gotten, if there's any restrictions that come with that 3.4. So we're, we're moving full steam ahead without using that 3.4, because at this point, we, we may not have to, we may not have to use it and we'll have that for next year. But then again, what we also may find out is that it can only be used for infrastructure. So as soon as those rules come, regulations come out, we'll be able to apply them.
Some, so from your, your specific professional opinion based upon your discussions with Mr. Ficcone, I mean, what are we looking at budget-wise this year?
So I think, I think everybody's going to be pleasantly surprised. I hate to give a number, because until the budget is, is adopted, that number could change. But we have been working very hard. We made some very, very difficult decisions last year. We all have. We made them just, uh, difficult decisions as a, as a council, as a budget team. And those decisions that we made last year are going to pay off this year. And I think residents in general, without giving you a number, because we still have some work to do, but we, I will say this, we are on schedule to introduce our budget at the next meeting, which is the first meeting in April, which is April 13th. And I think, without giving you a number, because I hate giving numbers, especially because we do have some, we do have to roll up our sleeves a little bit more and, and dig into it. But I think the residents are going to be pleasantly surprised with the number.
But I mean, from that perspective, you know, I know we've heard these numbers bandied around $5 million shortfall, $6 million shortfall, $500,000 per household. I'm assuming we're a lot less than that.
Yeah, again, without.
I know, I know. You can't give me a firm number.
Can't give you the number. Listen, if I'm, if I, if I'm going to go on the record, I'm going to tell you that right now, the average, the average home taxes will go up less than $100, probably less than $25 a quarter.
So I'll, I'll too be on the record in a few minutes when my mayor's report.
Is that it on the budget?
You said you had some, you had some housecleaning to.
Some housekeeping. So, um, on, uh, Sunday, I'm sorry, on Monday, April 5th, we start alternate street sweeping again, alternate side parking. The sweeper will be in full term. Again, as much as we'd like to take advantage of the wet, of the weather now in March, we're still closing down the winter, the, the winter equipment. So there's, there's still some work to do before we concentrate on spring, but, which is only about another week. So on Monday, April 5th, we're back to alternate street parking and you'll see the sweeper out all the time. We also, will, you know, we already have a Saturday crew, but starting on Sunday, April 11th, we will have a Sunday crew working through the spring and into the summer. So again, another example of us doing more with less. If you take a look at our work, workforce, our numbers are lower, but we're actually doing much, much more. And again, we'll have cleaning crews out on the avenue and around town on Saturday and Sunday, starting Sunday, April 11th. So pretty excited about that as well. And I really wish I could have shared the rendering. I got to practice my screen sharing, but other than that, I think that covers my report.
Okay. Next, we're going to move forward on the agenda. The next item is item number six. It is the report of the mayor. So I thank you for that good introduction to the budget, Mr. Manager, and Councilman Rovell's questions. So just to give everybody an update, as a member of the Budget Committee and somebody that probably has as most, the most knowledge, second to the manager and our financial team, I will say the manager made a very good point, and I think there are people on this Zoom that'll be very happy to find out for the first time in modern history, I think. The township of Bevel's budget will be submitted on time. State statute gives us until June, I'm sorry, till Ju, uh, March 30th and/or the next meeting thereafter. So therefore, we are scheduled to introduce our budget in the first meeting in April, which means that it's an on-time budget. Again, it sounds odd, but it's something that has not really happened in modern history in Bevel. So congrats to the budget team, to our financial team and to everybody else. The manager was being a little cautious, which I'm grateful to hear his cautiousness, I guess it's called, because we all remember a couple of years ago, we had a budget that was $49. It ended up being just under 100, ended up being, I think, north of $200. So it's a little elementary and premature to be talking about exact numbers. But I want to just give everybody the answers that maybe they're thinking about how the budget process has worked just today. And the manager alluded to that. Just today was the second ever briefing that the Budget Committee has ever received. The Budget Committee had a meeting a few weeks ago. At that meeting, and the manager will probably nod his head correctly, at that meeting, it was told we had a $5 to $6 million budget deficit. Is that correct, Mr. Manager? You can just nod if you don't have to speak. He's, yes, not, not, okay.
Well, that was my pushing the mutant and stuff. Yeah, back in, I, I made, mayor, this goes back to December, yes.
Yeah, our first budget meeting was $5 to $6 million. So just to reiterate what has happened in the last couple of years, the manager then gave this council a lot of credit. This council has implemented a lot of cost-saving procedures. We have. There's absolutely no doubt about that. I sounded the alarm last August. I issued a letter to the manager in August sounding the budgetary alarm because our revenues were down because of COVID. The manager did reply. The council then voted on some of those issues and it was unanimous vote and the council was interested in seeing some of those cost-saving measures. At the last budget meeting, I'm sorry, at the last council meeting, we were told that the financial statement, which is all of our income, that is actually due by law on March 5th or 6th. The last council meeting, we had heard that that was submitted earlier. I had, as a member of the Budget Committee, asked for a copy of that. It wasn't ready. We didn't have it. I never got it. We then asked the manager to present that financial statement and at that time, the auditor wasn't on the call, our CFO wasn't prepared. We did not get that at the last council meeting. We then asked for it to be emailed to us. Never really received that. I had then issued a post last week sounding the budgetary alarm again, because at the, at that point, the knowledge we had was still $5 or $6 million. The good part about that is the next day, on Friday, the manager sent an email out, all documented, that we actually are looking a lot better than we originally thought. Now, I will tell you, as a, somebody who considers myself a fiscal conservative, that that still utilizes some one-time hits. What does that mean? We just left this meeting and went to executive session to discuss a potential settlement. That settlement's a dollar figure. If that one-time settlement comes into our budget, it's great for this year, everybody. It really is. It's great for this year. However, that doesn't help us for next year. We heard about the $3.6 million. Councilman Rovell mentioned it, and I'm glad everybody's aware that Bevel's on slate to receive $3.6 million. I've been arguing how, how unfair and how equitable the discharge of that money has been. For instance, neighboring Bluefield, similar demographics, slightly larger municipality, they're getting $26 million. Again, Bevel's getting about three and change, eight times our, our allotment. That is going to be another one-time hit. We do not have that money available right now to plug into this budget. And if we do get it, still two questions remain unknown. Can we use it for operating expense and can we use it all in the same year? We're told, we don't know about operating expenses. We're told it might actually be half this year and half, and half next year. So it's still premature to talk about the budget and talk about a number. There's still a one-time revenue that's plugged into this budget. We just left this meeting, went into executive session to discuss that. We do not have that money in hand, everybody. We don't have that money in hand. The 3.6 million from the federal government, we don't have that money in hand. So we are not out of the woods yet, but I will say, and I commend this council, because for the last two years, we have done a ton of cost-saving measures that have actually helped really make this not necessarily a tragedy. If we get some federal assistance, if we get a little bit of a one-time hit, it's going to help and it's going to balance out this year. There's absolutely no doubt about that. But I want to reiterate the fact that I've been very busy. Two weeks ago, I wrote a letter to Congressman Series, talking about the unfair distribution of the COVID money. Just so you all know, your federal tax dollars of 1.7 or 1.9 trillion dollars that was doled out to everybody, had nothing to do with COVID expenses, had nothing to do with impact. So whereas we in Bevel, percentage-wise, were among the worst hit, we spent more time in the orange than any other municipality. NORC didn't spend that much time. Irvington didn't spend that much time. NORC's getting $189 million. We're getting three. So I wrote a letter to him about that and I also had a Zoom meeting last week with our L29 legislative team that has been, that's our senator and our state assembly people. All been very supportive and I'm asking them for state and county help for Bevel's budget issues. We did not get $26 million like Bluefield did. We got three. We do not have it in hand. We do not know what we can spend it for and it very well may be 50% this year and 50% next year. So just keep all that in mind when, when you hear different numbers being thrown around out there from people that aren't our CFO or aren't on our Budget Committee. My last briefing was only a couple of hours ago today. It was a telephone call. The Budget Committee has only met now twice, one in person, one by phone. And we do have another meeting scheduled next week, but the good news is I do expect the budget on time for introduction at the next council meeting. That's my budget update. Real quick, a few upcoming events. We have a few drive, a food drive coming this coming Thursday, when I'm done with the mayor's report. If Councilman Cazarelli has something to add to that, he can. Information is on our website. It's first come, first served. 9:00 AM at Hendrix Parking Lot. That's the golf course. Additional info on our social media and on our website. We have an Easter drive-through. Bevel's become the drive-through capital of New Jersey with our events. We've all had very successful events from the Christmas drive-through to the Three Kings Drive-Thru to now. Actually, a year ago, we did an Easter drive-along multiple streets, but now we're back to a drive-through. It's this coming Saturday. Information is on our town website. You must pre-register. Please pre-register. It starts at 1:00. Information is on our website. Also, this Saturday, Bevel Little League. They're doing a second round of tryouts. Listen, I'm a Bevel baseball guy. I'm a Little League guy. I was Team PBA. I see Ms. Lococo is here. She's, lives right across the street. She's very familiar with the Little League field. I attended the Little League tryouts this coming Saturday. I believe it was nine children showed up, everybody. Nine. We promoted it. It was advertised. We had about 70 registrations. Only nine kids showed up. So we're going to go a second round. So we're going to do a second round. It's going to be this coming Saturday. Please share it on social media if you can. We really want to save Little League. It's an institution here in Bevel. Many people, including myself, have had their lives changed by my Little League experience, so I, I do hope that turnout gets better. Manager mentioned it in his report. Street sweeping will resume on Monday, April 15th, which means alternate side of street cleaning will be in force, which means tickets, if you're not parked on the correct side of the street. Next council meeting, big council meeting, April 13th. That's our next council meeting. Because the first council meeting of the month, we typically do presentations. If you did not get the chance to see the great presentation that our fantastic library and President Peralta had hosted last week about the Essex, I'm sorry, the Essex Hudson Greenway Project, nine-mile stretch. It's basically Bevel's own High Line. We're going to have that presentation on April 13th, next council meeting. It's going to be a 10-minute presentation. They will, Mr. Manager, be able to share their screen and let everybody see the great renderings that are going to happen. Great thing, game changer for Bevel, everybody. Last but not least, Junior Police Academy. Applications are on our township website and social media. Deadline for that is May 7th. That was the last upcoming event. Now to other news. Unfortunately, everybody, unfortunately, I reached out to the state. We were all expecting a 2021, I'm sorry, 2022 major state investment into Washington Avenue, a $12 million infrastructure investment. That's on hold. They're saying that the design is going to happen this year in 2021 and that the project might not commence until 2024. Nothing we could do about that, state money. We're going to have to make some decisions on what we do with Washington Avenue. In the meantime, we were kind of holding off for that. Going to round up some different things here. Next council meeting, I put a item on the agenda for discussion to open up our meetings, to end this remote stuff, to come back in-house. We believe, according to our interpretation of a recent governor's executive order, that legislative proceedings can resume without social distancing. So guess what, everybody? COVID does not matter when it comes to legislative proceedings. It's exempt from legislative proceedings. We can pile everybody into the council chambers if we want. Gathering guidelines from the state, from the governor have exempted legislative proceedings. COVID doesn't matter when it comes to that. We may have to still socially distance. So I'm not sure where that's going to go, but I want to ask the members of the council, every single one of them, kind of get them on the record. I'm always the one on the record. See whether or not they're comfortable, but whether or not they're willing to actually attend an in-person meeting. I certainly am for one. A green team, maybe Councilman Cazarelli and/or Councilman Rovell will mention this in a second. A green team, we were there this past Saturday. Community plots are available. Stay tuned for the flyer and for the information on our website. Great project, everybody. Boy Scouts involved. Absolutely amazing. We still have the Home Improvement Program, $22,000. This could be a grant if you live in your house for five years after that. Emergency Rental Assistance Phase Two is up on our website. Please check that out if you need it. Rounding it all off, everybody, senior vaccines. We've done a great job in the last month or so getting our seniors vaccinated. Thanks to the county, thanks to our health department, mayor and council's office have assisted in that. Please call the health office and/or mayor and council's office for that information. But I believe this week, we start homebound senior vaccinations. If you are a senior that's homebound, Bevel's getting 15 to 20, I think, a week, we will come to your house and give you that vaccine if you so choose. That kind of wraps up my mayor's report. I know we traditionally do committee reports, the first meeting of the month, but I did touch on some things that I know either Councilman Cazarelli, Councilman Rovell might want to touch on about the garden. I think Councilwoman DePena wants to give us an update on the Women's History Month. So without further ado, if any one of those councilmembers want to jump in for a second, please do so.
Let's let Councilwoman DePena do her thing first. I just had some questions and some other things, but go ahead and do the, do her things first.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Mayor. So a few weeks ago, we asked the community to nominate strong women, empowered women in our community that were making a difference and in honor of Women's History Month. So I was very, very encouraged by seeing some of the women and being able to tell their stories. So I'm just going to share a little bit about those nominees that we received. We received a nomination for Carla Veras and Carla was nominated because of the work that she does. She actually is a supervisor in Nash, in Alamo and Enterprise Newark Airport. And what people admire most about her is her ability to provide, serving people in her community, more than 500 cars, but also leading her team with much, with humility and no matter where she has brought, where this has brought her, she's remained very, very humble, leading her team. So Carla, thank you so much for what you do. We appreciate you as well. Also, someone who was nominated was Marilyn Lococo. I know that many of you know her. She is an educator. I actually had the pleasure of working with her at School Three. And Ms. Lococo taught for 30 years and even after she retired, she returned and came now as a substitute, has been going above and beyond for the past four years, still serving her community and serving the children. And I believe she had some pictures of Councilman Cazarelli when he was a child. So we may or may not show them.
I vote show them.
So someone else who was nominated was Ms. Lisa Palacio from our children's program in the library for her dedication, bringing remote programs for the children, even throughout the whole period of COVID. And those are things that I know parents admire and they nominated her for her commitment, week after week, in terms of bringing joy to the children. Also, Ms. Patty Wells was nominated for the work she does through Little Zion Food Pantry, feeding over 500 families. So thank you, Patty. You definitely make our community better. Dr. Pando was also nominated. She is a doctor, her, a doctor here in town for the work that she does going above and beyond for her patients. And Ms. Lucy Delgado. Lucy coordinates our Veterans Day 5K and she is a veteran. She was nominated for her continued dedication to be of service to her sisters in arms. She's inspiring. She has also led some legislation as well in behalf of, of veterans. Ms. Frances Bacardi, our library director, was also nominated for the work that she has done in bringing always positive and raising the bar and demonstrating company pride. I think I've been definitely, I've been able to, to see that. And I think one of the things, especially for me as an employer, when I have my, my employees be able to, you know, to nominate you, I think it's a great honor. So all of the staff at the library nominated Frances for her work and the positivity that she brings. So thank you, Frances. Petra Rivera was also nominated for being a shining light, the, building a close community in our town. And actually, I can say that was a part of that, creating Facebook groups in town during the shot, shutdowns to bring the community together, whether through block parties and now even most recently with a gardening Facebook group that's bringing the community together. So I think those are really awesome things that bring the community together. So thank you so much, Petra, for the work you do. And last but not least, we have Cecilia Castro, who is a nurse and 30 years spent as a foster mother. She took care of medically fragile children and adopted, after raising three of her own children, adopted four of those children that she fostered. So Bevel is full of incredible women. This is really exciting to see what we do. And I love the, the opportunity to tell the stories of these women. So on March 31st, we are going to have a small gathering for in honor of all of these women that, that were nominated. So thank you for what you do in the community. We love you.
Thank you all. Thank you, everybody. Congratulations to all the nominees. Excellent stuff. Okay, so Councilman Cazarelli, anything about?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mayor. And just to add, I, I would like to also thank the two councilwomen we have on the council with us. You guys are very active in our community and you're role models to all the little girls out there. So I thank you for all your, all your actions here on the council.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah, so as the mayor said, one thing that we do is we fight for Bevel. So one thing that we've done in the last couple of weeks is we've been fighting for this food drive to come to Bevel. We've seen it in a lot of towns. So myself and him have contacted all of our county legislators. So myself and him have contacted all of our county legislators, and we kinda put a little pressure on them, and they definitely agreed that they're gonna do it in Belleville, so on March twenty-fifth at nine o'clock, um, is the official start time for that food drive. It's no contact, you come up with your car, open the trunk, we put it in your trunk, meeting me, the mayor, maybe a couple other, the council are gonna put it in your trunk, and then you leave. You don't have to show ID, nothing, you just drive up and leave, no contact. So we need a lot of Belleville people to come out. I think it's the first five hundred people we're gonna be able to serve, so you might wanna get there early, uh, if you do plan on coming. Also, one thing that we do have today, uh, that went live a couple of days ago, was our Exchange, Exchange Plaza, I'm gonna call it, where, um, where we have a safe exchange place, the signs went up. So when you do internet transactions, when you want to switch your children with your, you know, divorced husband or wife, there's a safe spot that the police are monitoring. So that's right at Town Hall by the Police Department, those signs are up, there's pictures on our website of that also. And I think that's about it, I'll leave the planters and everything we did on the weekend to Councilman Revelle to talk about.
Gee, so nice, thank you. So, um, I, I wanna, I wanna thank all the people, the Club Scouts and everybody that showed up on Saturday at Fairway, we put in, I don't know, was it twelve? I'm trying to remember, how many?
Uh, twelve, but we actually ordered another ten or twelve more, so I think it's gonna be almost twenty-five planters when we're done.
And there's, they're gonna be available to, for the residents to rent, right? To, to plant their own little garden.
Yeah, I think they're twenty-five dollars for the season.
So they can plant their own little gardens and take care of them.
Absolutely.
Uh, you know, I wanna thank Gabby and, and everybody that was involved, you know, it's, these are great things, really moving forward, and I think there are some ideas there to come up with a, a wide, a way to create a sustainable funding mechanism for us to do this, maybe even get some of that stimulus money to help us out, too. I, I just have one last thing, and I, I wanted to talk about this, and, and the mayor brought it up. There was a, a tax suit that was implemented in two thousand sixteen. And it's, it's part of what he was discussing here with, with this possibility of a lump sum payment, plus also that lump sum can be used in part, depending upon how the year goes, partly this year, and hopefully we can actually use it next year to, to subsidize some of this tax increases that we're looking at in shortfalls that we think we may have. But it's, it also, it has a piece of it that'll actually be, you know, moving forward as well, so. I mean, I, I think there's a lot of positives that came out of that case, which was implemented in two thousand sixteen.
True, no, that's true, and I, I, don't quote me on the number, I wanna say the township has spent maybe four to six hundred thousand legal fees, but it does look like we're on the, we're on the, talk about the settlement, we're on the plus side of that.
Yep.
But we were arguing over twelve million dollars in ratables, which we're never gonna see.
They can always ask, you know?
Okay, so, uh, yeah, we, we went off a little bit there, we don't normally go into different committee stuff, but, you know, there was a need to do that. So we're gonna move on now with the rest of the meeting, so we are on the approval of the minutes. I need a, Madam Clerk.
Regular meeting of October twenty-seventh.
Make a motion.
I heard a motion and I heard a second, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notori.
Yes.
Revelle.
Yes.
Trumal Burke. Trumal Burke.
You're muted, Marie.
Yes. Okay, next item on the agenda, communications.
A request received from the Belleville Soccer Association for permission from March eighth to June twentieth, twenty twenty-one. They are requesting the use of the large field on Mondays and Wednesdays from six to seven thirty PM, and both fields on Tuesdays and Thursdays from six PM to nine PM, and Sundays from nine AM to four PM.
I believe last year, we actually stopped taking action on this stuff, we just referred to the manager and the direct department.
Yeah, direct department, let them coordinate.
Yeah.
Mayor, if I may, I have one additional communication.
Do, do we have it in our package? We don't have it, though, right?
No, I have it. It's a request received from the River of Life Assembly of God Church for permission to block off Hornblower Avenue between Holmes Street and Claremont Place on Sunday, April fourth, from nine thirty AM to one thirty PM, and permission to give out one hundred bags of food on Saturday, April seventeenth.
Okay, we just basically, we don't approve this stuff, we just refer it to the Police Department and let them know. That's the only other communication we have?
That is it, Mayor.
All right, it's gonna be a quick meeting, next item on the agenda is ordinances.
Ordinance number one for introduction, and ordinance authorizing a special emergency appropriation in the amount of one million nine hundred eighty-two thousand seventy-eight dollars for expenses related to contractually required severance liabilities resulting from the layoff or retirement of employees in and by the Township of Belleville and the County of Essex, New Jersey.
Make a motion, introduce.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion made and second, introduce, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notori.
Yes.
Revelle.
Yes.
Trumal Burke. Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance number two for introduction, ordinance amending chapter thirty, excuse me, entitled Stormwater Control of the Codified Ordinances of the Township of Belleville.
Make a motion, introduce.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion made and second clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notori.
Yes.
Revelle.
Yes.
Trumal Burke. Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ordinance number three, excuse me, for introduction. Bond ordinance providing for improvements to the Municipal Stadium in and by the Township of Belleville and the County of Essex, New Jersey, appropriating five hundred and ninety thousand dollars, therefore authorizing the issuance of five hundred and ninety thousand dollars, bonds are known to the township to finance the costs thereof.
Motion, introduce.
Second.
We have a motion made and second, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notori.
Yes.
Revelle.
Yes.
Trumal Burke. Mayor Melham.
Yes. Do, do, I just wanna make sure that we have Councilwoman Burke here?
Did we lose her? Marie, you're muted.
Here.
She's there, they're muted.
Okay, she's here, we know she's here, so. Okay, next item on the agenda is ordinances for public hearing, second and final reading.
Ordinance number one for public hearing and ordinance amending chapter twenty-three zoning in the Township of Belleville and the County of Essex, New Jersey.
Need a motion to move it for public, uh, participation?
Make a motion.
Make. Second.
We have a motion made and second, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Notori.
Yes.
Revelle.
Yes.
Trumal Burke. Mayor Melham.
Yes. Okay, everybody, so we are at the portion of the meeting where we discuss just public comments on this particular ordinance, so the first thing we do is actually go in order that we've been keeping quite consistent, anybody that emailed in comments pertaining to just this ordinance will go first, then we go to those on video, then we go to those on audio, so the first question I wanna ask the clerk, Madam Clerk, do we have anybody that emailed in a question just on this particular ordinance?
Yes, I have two. The first one is from Chris Gosup, and he states, "Why is it such a rush to build another huge apartment complex on this property? Maybe our town can purchase it to build a school board building."
I, I, wait, hold on, unless, unless I'm incorrect, unless I'm wrong, that's not what this ordinance is about.
It's not?
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Martino?
It's not, but he still has the right to make the comment, so she should read the comment, and then you can address it.
Okay.
It's, it's about changing the, the zone for that particular property, but he has a right to make the comment, and then you can address it by saying what you just said.
Maybe our town can purchase it to build a school board building, park our school buses, and move our Department of Public Works there with other town facility groups. Federal loans and grants can be used to purchase property and avoid our current high paid rentals that the town is paying for now. When all these other department buildings in town that are currently being built or completed, you will see the parking fiasco you have created.
Okay. So I'm not quite sure that really pertains to the zoning map change, but I believe that satisfies the requirement to have that comment read.
And the next one I have is from Mary O'Tras, ninety-five Bell Street, and he states, "Ordinance for public hearing, can you please explain?"
Okay, so this is a change to the master plan. We've been having a lot of conversations, again, this council being extremely, extremely proactive. We don't wait for situations to come and, and rear their ugly heads, we are taking a proactive approach. It's not a secret that Kmart is bankrupt, that Kmart will be closing, so proactively we wanna make sure that what ends up there is something that the township is happy with, and for the most part, something that will get us decent ratables. If the township did nothing, if we do not act right now, if we don't act right now, Kmart can close, somebody can come in and as of right, put self-storage there, which is not something we want on Girolliman and Main Street. So therefore, rather than have somebody come in, make that application, which they would have a right to do under existing zoning, this council, this governing body, in conjunction with the planning board, are being very proactive in the sense that we are changing the zone to the, I always get confused, the VB one or we are changing it to VB one from VB two, which would allow similar uses that you see in the strip mall across the street and everything else, it does not necessarily mean that residential is going there, as a matter of fact, does not mean.
Through the chair, just one, one quick question, and, and this is directed towards council. My understanding is that when you get a, a, a big taxpayer like that in, in, in a town, that they have to inform us as to when they're gonna leave, is that, is that something they've done already, or, or? You know, what's, what's the law on that?
I will direct that to either Steve Martino or Mr. Dean Donatelli, who's our redevelopment council, anyone of you gentlemen wanna jump in on that?
Well, Councilman Revelle, just, the question is whether they have to inform us when they're leaving. As long as they, as, as long as they continue to occupy the premises, and they're not abandoning the property, so.
Right.
They don't have to, they can leave anytime they want, as long as they continue to pay their, their real estate tax, so.
And I, but I thought, like, any taxpayer, when, when they're gonna vacate a property or something of that nature, they have to give you, like, a year's notice or something.
No, they, that, that, they do not have to do that.
Okay.
Well, we do, Steve, we do have our vacant abandoned property ordinance.
Well, that, yeah, that's a different issue, if they ban the property.
They have to register, pay their abandoned property fee and whatnot.
That's, that's correct, Councilman Cazarelli, that's, that's a different issue, that if they, then they do have to, if they completely abandon the property, then they do have to, but.
We, we have no indication they're doing that, we're just trying to protect the next, we're trying to protect the township from the next buyer buying it and saying, "I can put self-storage here, I don't need any approvals." That's basically.
But it's probably not up for sale, is it? To my knowledge, I mean, you're not liquidating yet.
But not every property's, it's up for sale, changes hand, you know, the property can still change hands.
Still, they're still in bankruptcy, they're still in bankruptcy. Um, and, and we get notice of any applications they make to the bankruptcy court, so if they are going to settle it, or sell it, I'm sorry, they are gonna settle, sell it, we will get notifications
Okay.
of any, and, and any sale, uh, and, and theoretically any lease, so if they were gonna lease it to Target, then, you know, we would get notification of that, because we are, we are an interested party in their bankruptcy, and I get notifications of that, of that.
I get the same thing, okay, so we're, we're actually still in public comment, so let me get, we could always continue this once we close public comment and council and counselor, so Kelly, do we have, that was two comments that were read, that were emailed in, anything else that was emailed in pertaining to this particular ordinance?
No.
Okay, so everybody, we're gonna play the video, if you're on video and you have something to say only about this particular ordinance, I'm gonna ask you to raise your hand. Uh, I do, okay, I see Mr. Frant Antoni is here, Mr. Frant Antoni, just if you will, just unmute yourself, please, state your name and address for the record. Nope, you're muted now, actually, you gotta unmute it. There you go. Can't hear you. Now you're muted. Cannot hear you, you're muted, I see the mute button on. Now you're unmuted, but I think there's something wrong with your microphone, you are, you are actually unmuted right now, we just cannot hear you. Nope, now you're muted. I think there's something wrong with your microphone, Mr. Frant Antoni. Here's what I'm gonna do, Mr. Frant Antoni, you figure that out, I'm gonna just move on, I'll come right back to you before we, we, we close, though, okay? Uh, you, you could try and figure it out, anybody else that's on video, I have two screens to scroll through, so. I don't see anybody else on video with a hand being raised, so I'm gonna move on to anybody that's strictly on audio, and I'll come back to Mr. Frant Antoni before we're done. And anybody that's on audio, just unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record, and you're speaking only on this particular ordinance.
Uh, Michael Sheldon. Uh, Michael Sheldon, forty-seven Floyd Street, I just have a few questions about this ordinance. You already acknowledged that this is the aftermath of what was discussed at the last planning board meeting to change the zoning for the Kmart property from VB two to VB one. Uh, there was a lot of additional discussion during that planning board meeting of possibly changing some other zoning in the valley to VB one, and even some other zoning elsewhere in the Belleville. So my first question is, is this ordinance specifically just for the Kmart property to change it, and it alone, from VB two to VB one? The other, uh, thing I wanted to mention here is that if, if iCompass was properly set up at this stage, and it had, you, you, and recently you've disabled the links to get the packets, which make it impossible for us to see the statements of these ordinances and resolutions prior to these meetings. You know, you, you, you're, you're really doing a disservice to the community by not fully implementing iCompass. For two years now, we've heard these promises, but we have to ask these questions, what exactly is contained in this particular zoning ordinance change, is it just the Kmart property and nothing more, I also wanted to say that, um, if I remember correctly, under VB one, which is what the Kmart property will be rezoned as, it doesn't allow any residential use, it only, VB one, if I remember the details correctly, only allow things like retail and commercial, possibly school educational purposes, but as you said earlier, it wouldn't, changing it from VB two to VB one would prevent the property from being changed into a trucking depot or self-storage site. So those are my first two, two questions, if I could get, get, or an answer to the scope of this ordinance change, is it just for the Kmart property? Or are other properties also included, and if so, what properties and how are their, their, is their zoning being changed?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna kick this over to Mr. Dean Don, the good part about having these kind of meetings is that we have our professionals on hand to answer these kinds of questions. I only have the ordinance here, it does say, "See the attached map", I do not have the map, you are correct, Mr. Sheldon. We did discuss several property that are on the other side of the street on Girolliman Street, including that. I'm not quite sure if, I'm in favor of it, so it wouldn't matter for my vote either way. I'm not quite sure if that's included already in this change and or not, I'm gonna ask Mr. Dean Donatelli to speak to that.
All right, well, just before Mr. Dean, uh, Mr. Donatelli, uh, gives us his expertise in this matter, uh, as you remember, the planning board meeting, Vic Mafucci pointed out that there was an RA zone elsewhere in the Belleville that needed to be, to be addressed, and there was some discussion among planning board members of possibly changing a, a orphaned RA zone somewhere along Mill Street, and I don't know if that's also being included in this particular zoning ordinance as well, so I, I, I now will appreciate Mr. Donatelli telling us exactly what changes are being contemplated by this zoning ordinance.
Does that conclude your comments for this particular ordinance, Mr. Sheldon?
Well, uh, hopefully, but I don't know, based on what Mr. Donatelli says, I may have a follow-up question.
Okay, uh, Mr. Mr. Donatelli?
Yeah, thank, thank you, uh, Mayor, for the question, and the short answer is, this, this ordinance only changes the zoning from VB two to VB one, the other, the other items that were discussed at the planning board would be, uh, you know, future potential action by the council.
Would've been my guess, because they kinda came up during.
Unmuted now. I'm unmuted, Anthony.
We hear you, we hear you, Ms. Burke.
All right, what, Anthony?
Anthony, uh, now I'm saying Anthony.
Anthony, are you there?
Councilwoman Burke, we hear you.
We hear you, Marie.
All right.
You, you heard? You're muted. You're muted.
Kelly, she called up, Marie called the main number because she couldn't get the mute off, but now she's unmuted, correct?
Well, she's now, she figured it out, that's for sure. Now she's muted. Uh, okay. So, uh, Mr. Donatelli, so, uh, yes, I think everybody's right here. There, there, the intent on the planning board meeting was to discuss just Kmart. During that meeting, we discussed a couple ancillary properties and some other issues. The residential zone in the parks and other issues came up. I'm going to assume those are going to be subject of a future ordinance, correct?
Correct. And, and I would defer to, uh, to Mary Ann Bucci Carter, the, the town's.
See here, Mary Ann, if you can quickly just say yes or nay, I would appreciate it. You're muted.
Okay, um, the answer is yes. It is only for the Kmart property. All the other properties.
We had, had a couple other properties there.
There were some other properties discussed. They were discussed as being recommended to be added to the master plan for changes and they were adopted that way. Uh, and then the, the council can entertain those recommendations anytime. They can do them in ones or in piecemeal.
Okay. I think Mr. Sheldon, that should answer your questions.
Yes, thank you for clarifying this matter. Thank you.
We can add that, and Mary Ann could, can add some color to it, um.
We don't need any color.
I'm unmuted now, Anthony. I'm unmuted now.
The, the VB one zone, it does not, as Mr. Sheldon, I believe the question was whether it permits a residential and it's, it is strictly a commercial zone.
So the public comment that we heard at the beginning of this about residential is, I guess that was a moot point because it does not pertain to this. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
We've now gone through emailed questions about this ordinance. We've gone through Viddy. I, I'm going to get to you, Mr. France Antoni. So we've gone through video, we've gone through, I think, audio. I see Mr. France Antoni, we're going to loop back to you, sir. You're up, Mr. France Antoni. Can't hear you. The problem with your microphone, because you're definitely, no, now you're muted again.
Hello, am I unmuted?
Yes, you're unmuted, Marie.
We could hear you, Marie. I'm going to unmute you.
All right.
We're trying to get to Mr. France Antoni. I think there's a, there's a microphone issue, Mr. France Antoni, with your computer. No, now you're muted for sure. But even when you unmute, we cannot hear you when you're unmuted. We still can't hear you when you're unmuted. In the meantime, do we have any, I, I will circle back to you in a second, Mr. Frank. In the meantime, do we have anybody else that's on audio that wants to unmute and speak just on this particular ordinance? Okay, I don't see any. Unfortunately, it doesn't seem like we're going to get to Mr. France Antoni. I'm making every effort to delay this. What I will do is, uh, we still have a public commenting portion coming up. Uh, I will absolutely, if Mr. France Antoni can get his microphone working, afford him a little more time so he can comment on this particular ordinance, but we're about to take action on it. So. Is there a way that Mr. France Antoni can call in?
I'm going to write it on a piece of paper. Hold it up to the screen.
I think he's got a microphone issue there. We do offer multiple ways to communicate, everybody. You can email in your questions. I know Mr. Frank Antoni has done that in the past. You can dial in without a computer. I'm going to hope that we've answered, Mr. I'm going to hope that Mr. Sheldon's questions and some of the other questions have answered Mr. France Antoni's questions. We've kind of covered the fact this is not going to be residential. We've kind of covered the fact that we're doing this to protect against.
Hello?
Happy with?
Hello?
We can hear him, Marie. We can hear you.
Okay. Steve.
So unfortunately, Mr. Frank Antoni, I do have to close this out so we can move forward. I will give you a little more time if you can figure it out for public commenting. So without further ado, I'm going to entertain a motion to close public commenting on this particular ordinance.
Motion to close public and move for, uh, final adoption.
Second.
Second.
Motion made in second to close public commenting and move for final adoption. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosrally.
Yes.
Kenya?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Natori?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Trumala Burke? Mayor Mountham?
Yes, I think it doesn't vote for, it doesn't work for roll calls. It seems to work every other time except for roll calls.
The ordinance is.
There it is.
You're there, you're there, there, is she there? Councilwoman Burke?
I'm here.
Where'd you vote?
What was he? I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. Say that again?
It's on the ordinance.
It was the ordinance on.
Kelly, tell me what ordinance it is, please, because I'm having problems with my dog over here. That's the problem.
B one.
What is it?
B one.
B one?
Yes.
I, I, I don't know how to, B one. I, I don't know what to do. Right, star six, do I have to put? Oh, wait, now I got Anthony. I, wait a minute.
You don't have to do anything where you just have to vote yes or no.
Just yes or no.
On the ordinance, it's B one.
On the ordinance, yes, right?
Okay, good.
We got it.
Yeah. Okay, thank God.
Just hit the spacebar to, to mute and then you're going to unmute yourself again when we have to speak.
Okay.
All righty. Next item, I'm going to entertain a motion to open public comments.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made in second, open co- public comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, seems like unanimous ayes. Madam clerk, uh, we're going to keep the same exact ordinance, uh, the same exact order. We tend to go with anybody that emailed in any comments. Do we have anybody that emailed in any comments for today's meeting?
Yes, I have several.
Okay, are we going to take them in the orders? Several seem, okay, seems like a lot.
It is.
We're going to take them in the order that you gave them to us?
Yes.
Okay, so let's go. Number one.
First one is from a concerned citizen and they say, good morning and emailing, I'm emailing regarding the town budgets and ongoing tax hikes. I'm emailing in support of not moving forward with any unnecessary spending such as technical upgrades. Roads need to be repaired after the winter. We need tax relief and there has been an increase of about $30 due to this increase in taxes on my mortgage. We really need to work together and not let politics or any other relationships get in the way of doing what's best for our community. Please, as a resident of Bevel, speaking for the majority, a tax hike right now on the verge of coming out of a pandemic when people are just trying to get back on their feet isn't the way.
Thank you, Mr. or Mrs. Richmond for that comment.
Number two is from Joseph Cur- Curcio. He states, as I am sure you're well aware, the property taxes and water fees have been going up at an insane pace. Now to think about more tax increases when many of us are trying to get back to work and quote upon bills is another kick in the face while we are down. I hope the township council does what is needed to protect us and give us the services that we are already being overcharged for. Instead of always looking to increase taxes, maybe the township council can take a look at waste and how to provide the same services at a less expensive cost. Also, what about the funds from the American Rescue Plan? That was purposely sent to us to help offset the costs from the pandemic. Bevel is getting 3.58 million, but we are still being told we need to raise taxes again and again. This is beyond insanity at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Curcio. So I, I agree with you with the taxes and the budget stuff. We're, we're working hard to hold that line. And with regard to the 3.5 million, we kind of said it during my mayor's report, going to reiterate it briefly now, so I don't have to say it again uh, to anybody else that might be asking the same question, but the 3.5 million, we do not have it in hand. Our budget is due in seven days and/or the next possible township council meeting. We do not have that 3.5 or $6 million in hand. We do not know, even if we had it in hand, there's been no guidance on how we can spend it, if we can go into operating or we can put it into uh, capital or infrastructure and we don't know, we don't think we can use it all this year. A lot of ifs on that. And, uh, which is part of the reason why we're being as cautious as we are, we're not trying to tell taxpayers what the, what the dollar amount is just yet. Uh, which is why I'm all for holding all, holding the line on all new spending at this point. Okay.
Next one is from Missouri 593 and they state as a homeowner and taxpayer of Bevel, I'm writing to oppose this 100,000, 100,000 dollar software. Taxes are ridiculous in Bevel. Never did I think would be this high. Please consider this before Tuesday's meeting.
Just to, uh, thank you for your comment, uh, just to reiterate it, we, the, the, the dollar amount is 100,000. It's over two years. So it's about 48 to 50,000 dollars a year for two years. And again, we've had this conversation last council meeting where there was a presentation made. Nothing about the vendor, nothing about the type of software. Just in my opinion, it wasn't time for it just now. I think some other council members agree, some may not, but we're going to, we're going to find out. But it's not, it's 100,000 dollars over two years. Again, I'm all for holding the line on taxes until we know exactly where we stand with our budget. Next.
Next is Jennifer Toomey and she states, it has come to my attention that a vote is coming up on new municipal software and the amount of 100,000 dollars. It is my understanding that this is not necessary and it would be the third different software vendor in five years. Can you say insanity? If you haven't noticed, our taxes and water rates have already gone up and we are still in a global pandemic. So many people I know are struggling just to feed themselves and their children. How can you justify putting more on us when we are already struggling to survive? My house was built in 1917 and has been in the family since then. My grandfather raised my mother in this house. My siblings and I were raised in this house and I'm currently raising my children in this house. You are leaving us to other choice but to sell or risk losing what we've worked so hard to keep. I strongly urge you to reconsider and vote against this.
Thank you, Ms. Toomey. So again, the 100,000 dollars is actually over two years. You are correct. It, it, from my math, it is the third software vendor in five years. And, um, uh, you say, how do we justify putting more on us? I don't, uh, I don't think that it's time to do this right now, but again, this is going to be a vote of the council and we're going to see how that happens. Um, thank you for urging your rebuttal against it. Okay, do we have anybody else?
Yes, we do. The next one is from Abdu Allah Torrance. He states, I'm a resident of Bevel and object against the purchase of 100,000 dollars of new software when our town needs every last bit of money we can get to, to survive during the pandemic. Luxuries are not needs but wants and this new software is a want. I feverishly object to voting for this new software, especially when we are at a deficit of five to six million dollars. And if the council votes for this, this software, then I severely scrutinize whether or not the council is for the town of Bevel. This is not the time nor the place to add to the expensive unnecessary upgrade, which will be passed down to the pockets of the citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Torrance. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to correct every single person that writes it. I'm just going to let the record reflect that it's 100,000 is the award of the contract, but it is over two years or so. So I'm not going to say that. I don't know how many more we have.
Hey, just, just to clarify through the chair. First you said it was 250, then you said it was 100 and you're correct. It's going to replace existing software at 18,000 dollars, which basically puts it at a net of about 30,000 dollars and it was in last year's budget, which is carried over to this year's budget. So there's no additional tax whack from it. And on, on that side of it, let's be serious, Mike, you spent, you and your friend just spent 36,000 dollars for a public relations firm, which has no return on investment, which this will be done in a year. So I think we should actually be clear on this. And I think, I think these people have been misrepresented, which now you're seeing, you put it out on Facebook. Should we take everything we want to do and put it on Facebook? I want, I want transparency. I don't want misrepresentation. This has been misrepresented and we know.
Let's do transparency. Uh, maybe the manager will release the document he signed in December showing the 250,000 dollar purchase. I didn't make that number up. That was originally a five-year, 250,000 dollar purchase. I'm not calling him out on that.
And it was budgeted for last year, true.
We admitted that last year. So you say first, I said it was.
We didn't expend it and we didn't expend it.
It actually was.
You didn't say, this is the first time you've said it was over five years. So it's not really, basically it's 4,000 dollars a month. That's what we're paying. We're now paying 3,000 dollars a month for a public relations firm, which has no return on.
We're going to have that debate when it comes to resolution, council, uh, councilman. But with regard to the public relations, you voted on that, uh, last year.
No, you're right. I voted no on that.
You voted on that and.
And for some unknown reason, two other council people were not allowed to vote on that because they were out. So, great.
A year ago, when we first hired the company, you didn't vote on them?
Hey, I may have done that, you know, and my hope was, Michael, that, uh, and I think you need to say to people too, that that really plus that, plus what else is going on, it's probably cost us well over 70,000 dollars. I didn't think this year, based upon the pandemic, as you've said, we should do it.
Maybe you're not a fan of positive press. I am. I think the township does.
That would be, that would be a good thing to discuss.
I think our real values like that and I'm all for it. So let's, let's.
Let's, let's, let's be serious. Because you want to bring that up, I will be just as serious. Number one, that was approved back in a prior administration. When you came in, you delayed it a year and a half. And by the way, they now got a pilot that's basically in first year one, they're, they're not going to pay any taxes. So, hey, you know what? We can sit here and argue this stuff left and right. My whole point is let's move the town forward. Let's serve the best interest of the community. And I believe this software can do that by allowing people to interface with us.
You are on the record. I think we have about another 40 more comments to read though, so let's.
I'm sure you do because you're, you're really good at social media, Mike. So, I mean, I think maybe we should also look at who we peg now. Come on.
Do we have anybody else?
Yes, next one is from Juan A. Lopez Jr., Esquire Retired. He states, on a poll that considering budget shortfalls, the council is considering approving a new software contract. The end result might lead to tax increases and unrealistic outcome. I, I urge you all not to approve this contract until the budget has recovered financially from the effects of this fiscal crisis we are in.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Lopez.
Next is from Rose Low- Lowzy. She states, I agree with the mayor. I, I agree with Mayor Mountham that now is not the time to purchase new software. We are in a deficit, in a pandemic and people cannot afford for their taxes to go up when we are barely making ends meet. Please do not allow the installing of new software to proceed.
Thank you for your comments.
Next is from Giselle Lasquez. She states, good afternoon. The purpose of this email is to voice my strong objections to the consideration of 100,000 dollars worth of new municipal software to replace the current software. Our residents cannot handle and shouldn't have to deal with yet another tax increase. I literally can barely afford to live here any longer because of taxes. I barely have a backyard and simply have one floor ranch house and yet I pay over 10,000 dollars in taxes. This is insane and very bad money administration from our leadership.
Thank you, Ms. Lasquez.
Next one is from Michelle Liozi and she states, I'm writing this evening to object to the purchase of a new municipal software. With Bevel facing a five to six million dollar shortfall and people in town already paying enough taxes and struggling to keep their homes and businesses, it doesn't make sense to spend 100,000 dollars on a necessary software. Listen to Mayor Mountham. Don't purchase it if you don't need it. Then, next is from Douglas Montesano. He states, as a resident of Bevel, I'm expressing my outage with a software upgrade at this difficult time for many who are struggling with the shutdowns. This is akin to rearranging the deck chairs on the Titanic. Please bring this to the table and rethink adding this to the already stretched budget. We will certainly expose those council members who support this spending. Thank you. Next one is from Jennifer Plus. He states, I understand the importance of efficient information technology, especially for towns such as Bevel that is finally starting to awaken for complacency. But I would like to know how spending the money to implement this software makes sense and not just a local economic downturn, downturn, but also a national one. We are faced with the scary possibility of raising taxes while many of us have lost jobs and are struggling to just make ends meet. If this system isn't going to help make bigger cuts in the budget that will lower our taxes, then it is not a software that we need right now. Next one is from Gerard Grasso. He states, as a Bevel resident since 1966, I say this is not the time for spending 100,000 on unneeded software when we are in a five to six million dollar shortfall, shortfall. Please consider this in order for us to allude a dramatic tax increase and, and prevent us from hard, prevent hardworking citizens in Bevel from leaving. Thank you. Next is from C. Garcia. States, I'm firmly, I am firmly opposed to the 100,000 K software update. Our taxes in this town are running unreasonably high. If you consider that I can't even walk around this town without seeing garbage all over the streets and the thought of taxes going up dramatically for 2021, when people are trying to dig themselves out of a hole during pandemic is disgusting, disgusting. Homeowners are being taxed out of Bevel.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Thank you, Ms. Garcia.
Next one is from Cindy Kukas. She states, our property taxes need to be lowered. We pay too much in Bellville already, and the property taxes have already gone up. There is no reason why we need a software since there is nothing wrong with the current one we have.
So we are not, thank you for your comments. We're not gonna be able to lower taxes. We're trying to stabilize taxes, which means we, I'm, I've been outspoken. We should stem the tide on new spending. Thank you.
Next one is from Kathy Brown. She states, we already pay such high taxes in Bellville. I hope that you can find a way to hold the line. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Next one is from Latrice Rada. She states, we cannot afford it. At least I can any more taxes. Bellville has been hit enough. Wasteful spending at this time is not the answer.
Thank you, Ms. Rada. I think we're, are we halfway through?
Next one is from Lisa Perez. She states, I'm writing to object to the proposed expense of a hundred thousand dollars in new software. I would like clarity on why the town has needed two prior software updates in less than five years.
I don't know that.
Is this software necessary right now? Is it a want or need? With our town's current astronomical deficit of five million and the tax hikes that residents have been hit with lately, it seems very careless to propose spending needlessly. We should be focused on saving and trying to get our numbers in order without putting the burden of closing the deficit on the backs of the residents. After the past year, Bellville residents are suffering. Many of us cannot afford basic needs like food and heat, and it's shameful that some members want to splurge with other tax, with our tax dollars. Where is the relief for your constituents? I hope you all will rethink this proposed expense and do what is right by the residents suffering in Bellville.
Thank you, Lisa. That's a good point that was made is to, we've had two prior software updates in the last five years. To the best of my knowledge, any member of the Construction Code Subcommittee was never notified of this ask. And if you go back in our meetings, exactly one year ago, the director was before this council, just to give a nice presentation, a status update on where he is with his department, and I asked him two or three times, what can we do for you? What is it that you need? And besides, maybe asking for another inspector, software was not part of that, so it's really a want, not necessarily a need, in my opinion.
Mayor, you've been involved in software and things, and let's be serious, an update once a year is, is kind of minimal. And having it, you know, two in five years is absolutely reasonable, I think. And, you know, you and I have been through this, and so, you know, as far as I'm concerned, and, and I think that your miscommunication and your misrepresentation representation of this five to six million dollars freaked these people out in the middle of a pandemic. And if, and if they're looking at, at less than a hundred dollars per year on an average house, I think you need to apologize to them for scaring them and snot at them.
So just, just.
I mean, let's, let's be serious. You misrepresented that totally.
Let's be, let's be real serious. The councilman thinks that most people in Bellville live in a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar house. So a ninety-eight dollar increase on a two hundred and seventy thousand dollar house, most houses are probably three fifty to four, four and change. That would mean not ninety, it's about a hundred and seventy-five dollars. Then you factor in unit, then you factor into Board of Education, maybe it's a hundred bucks. Now you're up to two seventy, then you tack in a little bit from the county, you're at three oh five. So everybody here on the council.
Mike, I'm not disagreeing. We want to lower taxes. But this is what this whole software is about, getting a better process, taking the complaints out of your hands, giving us a better process to do permitting with, with Councilwoman DePena was looking for. These are the things you asked for as well. So I don't, I don't see where.
We're gonna have that debate when the resolution comes up for a vote.
No, it sounds like you've already started that debate, doesn't it?
Think, didn't, didn't we negotiate the contract before we had the presentation? Okay, next comment.
Is from Anne Marie Lordaddy. She states, my name is Anne Marie Lordaddy, and I'm a resident of Bellville. I'm writing regarding the software contract. I do not feel this should be approved. Bellville does not have it in their budget to approve this contract. From what I understand, we don't even have a budget yet. We are overtaxed to begin with, and I heard that our taxes will be going up soon. I hope it will not be because of the software contracts.
Anne Marie, you are correct. We do not have a budget. We do not know where the budget stands, and this is a new expense. Thank you.
Next is from Lisa Kistner. She states, I have always supported changes in order to improve the township for the better. At this very difficult and stressful time with people out of jobs and trying to make ends meet, this is not the time to be voting on additional software for the township. People are struggling to put food on their table and keep a roof over their head. This is something that is not necessary at this time. We need to keep our taxes down so citizens can remain in their homes. I implore the council to vote no on this endeavor.
Thank you, Ms. Kistner.
Next is from Ray Vigil. He states, I understand the importance of implementation of the new software for the town hall. However, if the current software is working as intended, there is no need to spend a hundred thousand dollars during these hard times. Where Bellville citizens are having a hard time making ends meet. Therefore, I would like to voice my objection on a one, on a one hundred thousand dollar software contract because this will hurt Bellville citizens because it will lead to a tax hike.
Thank you, Mr. Vigil. So that's number twenty. Ms. Clark, there anymore?
Yes, there is. The next one is from Irene Perez, and excuse me, but I'm not even gonna try to say her last name because it's just. So Irene Perez, I apologize for not pronouncing her name. I'm writing on behalf of my father, Herman Perez, who still, still lives in Bellville. Bellville is where I was raised. He is retired and on a fixed income, and an increase in taxes would be a hardship to him and anyone else in this position. Bellville Township spending should be curtailed. There should be a moratorium on any spending other than absolute essentials that benefit the safety and well-being of the people who live there, such as road repairs, police, fire, and ambulance services. It is ridiculous that there is a budget shortfall and that the council is approving spending of a hundred thousand dollars for software. This is an outrage. I think if people were not spending other people's money and instead spending their own money, they would be much more careful as to what is being spent where. Tax increases should be avoided, and the trickle-down effect to the people who will no longer be able to afford to live there should be carefully considered. You are changing the fabric of the community by displacing the long-term Bellville resident. Next is from Olga Swan. She states, I totally agree. This is not the time for software upgrades. I see some mention COVID relief. The one point nine trillion in relief to states restricts it being used for tax relief for its residents. Why then is a hundred thousand software needed? Property tax relief should be a priority, not software.
Thank you, Olga. I do think tax, property tax relief is a priority here. I think we are doing a great job. I just have a difference of opinion on some of my council colleagues on this particular matter, but the, and we've covered the one point nine trillion. Unfortunately, it had nothing to do with COVID, had to do with population size, everything else, Bellville's getting a small piece of that, and we do not have it yet. Therefore, we don't know this year's municipal budget, which is part of the reason, that's only part of the reason why I'm, I'm opposed to this, but thank you for your comment.
Next is from Angelica Stefanelle. She stayed, she states, hello, my name is Angelica Stefanelle. I've lived in Bellville for fifty-three years. I'm retired, a widow, and on a fixed income. The increase in taxes would be a hardship to me as well as other seniors. Bellville Township spending should be curtailed. There should be a moratorium on any spending other than absolute essentials that benefit the safety and well-being of the people who live here. It's ridic, ridiculous that there's a budget shortfall and the council is approving spending one hundred thousand dollars for software at this time. Why replace perfectly fine software at such a critical time? It does not make sense. What exactly is the software? Do we already have the software, and this is an upgrade? How much is the actual cost? What benefits is this to our services? What department will the software be installed? What company is this contract with? The residents should be able to review this contract before it's approved by the Township Council. This is an outrage due to COVID and people that are unemployed. The taxes cannot be increased. You are hurting the community and running the senior citizens out of town. You are changing the fabric of the community by displacing the long-term Bellville resident.
Thank you, Ms. Stefanelle. You did have some specific questions there, so I do, most of them have just been repetitive, so I just wanted to address this real quick. The residents should be able to review this contract. I tend to agree with you. The last council meeting, we did have a presentation with the vendor. Again, nothing against the vendor, nothing against the software, but we did have a presentation. Interestingly, we talked about outrage prior to the presentations when we were negotiating the contract. There was originally a five-year contract, which is why I was not misspeaking when I said it was a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar contract. That has since been pulled back. We are now at a two-year contract for a hundred thousand dollars. Those are absolutely the facts. You asked what department. It is mainly Construction Code, but it does spin off into several other departments. Keep in mind, all these other departments already have existing software before. This is not new. They have existing software that they can use. And the company's called GovPilot. You asked that. Again, nothing against GovPilot, nothing against the product that they do. Just now was not the time. I don't think we went about this the right way. I do not think any members of the Construction Code Subcommittee were asked or received input, had meetings, had conversations prior to this thing landing on us. I don't believe we ever entertained the director coming into us, making this kind of a request. Just not a fan of the way this was done, and especially at this particular time.
Number one, I think you're incorrect, Mayor. I think this actually ties together ten departments. And oh, by the way, addresses a major issue, a major issue.
Councilman?
Huh?
You name the ten departments?
Mike, I want to name them. Okay, I mean, you have basically the opportunity here, and, and maybe I misspoke. I didn't mean ten departments. Maybe I meant ten modules, like asset management, like your DPW, your customer or client relationship management aspect, the health department, the police department, the fire department.
Police and fire are gonna use it?
It's, it's gonna be, it, it allows us to take, number one, a load off of them and, and take, like you were saying, one of the, one of your main concerns, and I believe you said this multiple times, is you want a way to deal with complaints. And what happens is a lot of these complaints go to the police department or other people like yourself. And really, what we want to direct them is to the appropriate departments. On another note, how much last year, Mike, tell me how much you spent last year on the renovation of an office that only you use. Tell me that. Well, maybe, maybe we should, maybe we should have put that out on, on Facebook and argued that contract.
Well, why don't you tell me, counsel, because you said it in executive session two meetings ago. Go ahead.
No, you know what, Mike? I'll admit to making a mistake. Forty-four thousand dollars for that. Forty-four thousand, which is basically four thousand dollars less than, than one year of this contract. Thirty-six thousand dollars, and yep, you're right, Mike. I voted against it this year. And I'm, you know, I thought perhaps last year, I thought perhaps last year, when it was cheaper and it was less money. And besides which, that the Board of Ed did not have a current contract, and their contract is an hourly contract, which I believe, Councilman Atari said, shared services is really the way to go. And what we've done is opened ourselves up for double billing. So, I mean, look, you know, you want to talk about that, and the whole thing is, we're not five million dollar shortfall. We're not a six million dollar shortfall. You may have thought that, and you may have projected that, but these people are scared because of that.
I have emails from the manager and from our CFO basically stating that.
And you even said it was prior to even knowing the, the, the financial reconciliation. So that was basically improper on your part to even say that word.
Ah, okay. So, we come up for the resolution. I think that we've handled this particular comment. Do we have any other comments?
Yes, we do. The next one is from Chris Cossepp, and he states, one, why do you refuse to have an in-person council, council meeting while the school board has them in person? Two, why, why?
Yeah, there's a bunch, and they're, and they're not on, said, all the other ones are on the same topic, so we just let them, let them go. So in-person council meetings, I think we've discussed that already. You probably heard me, if you're here, Mr. Cossepp, talk about the fact that next council meeting, I will put a resolution up. And I'm gonna hope the fact that we get council members that actually gonna show up. I'm gonna show up. I believe several councilor may show up, but I, I'm not quite sure if all councilors are gonna show up. So, Mr. Cossepp, I think you should maybe ask some of your friends that are on the council whether or not they're gonna show up to the meetings, because I'll be here if we so choose to vote that way after next meeting.
I think most of us will be there if we already have the vaccine, which I do, and I think that that's something that we want to try to get to. But I would also like, based upon just conservative attitudes, if, if we have the capability there to also keep a Zoom meeting in place, and just in case somebody gets sick, because I'd hate for somebody to come in there and spread COVID.
Yeah, I think we'll make it accessible, but online. Any other guy, I know there's a couple more things there.
Two, why is it you will not buy the software that will help the community, but you spend huge amounts of our taxpayers' dollars on a public relations firm?
So I'll answer that. That received unanimous support two years ago, including Councilman Revelle, about spending about twenty-nine, twenty-nine hundred dollars a month. Again, we're a seventy-two million dollar corporation, which is what we were back then. And all we do is push out positive things. I get it. We've only been really, really getting a lot of good things accomplished in the last couple of years or so, and we're not used to maybe telling the residents that we're doing good things. But now we are doing good things. There's a lot of good things happening. And I'm proud to see Bellville's in the headlines and proud to see Bellville in the news to portray us in a very positive light. I have no problem. I don't think any of the residents, especially the ones that are seeing their house values skyrocketing because Bellville's becoming a desirable place, because people know we're here, and people know a lot of positive things are happening. I stand behind that decision. And, but it did receive unanimous support of my council colleagues. Some of them made that vote just a few months before their reelections, and they obviously liked the positive.
We didn't, we didn't benefit as much as you're gonna on your positive election, but on the other side of this is, you know, looking port, towards that, as you want to say, what happened in the last year, Mike? What we become aware of is the, the, this whole thing with the pandemic, and, and that's what changed my mind this year is you said it, and you keep saying it, but you don't do it. And that's it, the, the point that we need to go and save money on things that don't pay us anything back immediately. There is no return on investment with that, none whatsoever.
I, 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 it's a sad position that you have, which I, of course, this.
You know, right? And, and, and out of any other context, from a marketing perspective, if we're selling a product, yep, I agree with you, but in the middle of a pandemic, I don't. Sorry.
All right, so we could, again, have that conversation when it comes up again for contract. Right now, it's public commenting. I want to just try and address what, what they're asking. Next.
Three, how much of our taxpayers' dollars were spent on refurbishing your office?
That's good. I'm glad that you asked that question because there's been vicious rumors circulating, and I think even Councilmember Revelle was grossly overstating the amount. First of all, in the history of Bellville, there has been never really a full mayor's office. There's been a side corner closet that was never really utilized. That said, I just want, Councilmember Revelle should have corrected himself a second time because he keeps referring it to my.
You want to talk about grossly overstating. My, mine was probably maybe a hundred grand off, but yours is about five million off. So let's, let's not talk about grossly overstating.
Okay, so, the, the comment about refurbishing my office is just terribly inaccurate. Mr. Cazarelli has been here, Mr. Graziano is here. Any council member that actually comes to the building to participate in the government would know that this is a mayor council suite. They would know that there's a mayor's office in that suite. They would know that there's space for employees to sit. There's even a desk for council members to sit in. There's even a conference room. But most importantly, that's three rooms that I just rattled off in the mayor council suite. There's also a bathroom. I don't want to really book a labor at this point, but that bathroom was built to be handicap accessible. And before we get into a lawsuit because of a specific employee that we may have that might need that type of bathroom, we actually had to renovate that bathroom, which included that. So the, the total dollar map was under the bid limit. I think it was in the forty thousand dollar range to renovate three rooms in this building, not the mayor's office, which includes a conference room. My office was one of those three rooms and including a handicap accessible bathroom. Mr. Cossepp, if you're in the construction business, you will probably realize that that is not a lot of money. That money was spent in a bond. That bond was passed by previous councils, not me, specifically for internal improvements to this building here. So it didn't take any money out of this year's taxes and say, I want to build my own office. It's a mayor and council suite. It's three specific rooms, including a handicap accessible bathroom, which we needed because we did not have a handicap accessible bathroom on this side of the building. And without going too far and saying too much, we desperately needed one. We would have been looking at a potential lawsuit if we did not. Next.
Four, the mayor keeps stating we have a five to six million dollar shortfall for our annual budget. What is the mayor now going to do about it? Last meeting, he said on video, he is open for suggestions. That is your job to come up with a plan. I'm willing to hear what is the next step.
So I will stop you right there, because I actually have a piece of paper right in front of me that actually is on point to, what are we gonna do about that? So we've already discussed the fact that we don't think it's gonna be a five or six million dollar budget deficit. But even if it's a ninety-dollar budget deficit, Mr. Cossepp, I'm not sure what your house is worth. If it's worth any more than two hundred and seventy dollars, that ninety-dollar increase is out of the question for you, my friend. If your house is worth four hundred, you can basically double that increase before we get to Min, County, and before we get to school district. So, what are we gonna do? This council, and again, I use the word plural because as a majority, this council has done a lot. I will tell you that since I've been here as a part of this council, there are less employees. Seventy-eight percent of our municipal budget are employees. The best way to reduce the budget, Mr. Cossepp, is to reduce employees. I will tell you that I got an office in two thousand eighteen. I will tell you in two thousand nineteen, there were less employees than in eighteen. I will tell you that in two thousand twenty, there were less employees than nineteen. This council is trending in a good way. We are making legitimate tax cuts. What specifically? No council in the history of Bellville has ever eliminated the amount of jobs that this council has eliminated. No council in the history. No council in the history of Bellville has ever actually deleted positions the way we have. I'll give you some examples, since you want something specific. We noticed that our court revenue was down hundreds of thousands of dollars. You, Mr. Cosse, and every other taxpayer would have made that difference up. This council acted. You know what we did? We actually deleted the position of second judge. It no longer exists in Bellville. Poof, it's gone. We deleted it. You know what else we deleted? The position of assistant public defender, and also the assistant prosecutor. Three positions this council eliminated. I happen to know the assistant public defender prosecutor. Friends of mine, they've actually attended my fundraisers. Guess what? Gone. We got rid of them because we did not have the revenue to support them. They're gone. Board salaries. Let's talk about that. Before I got here, we were paying board secretaries five hundred dollars a meeting. That's a lot of money for a meeting that might last fifteen or twenty minutes. We were paying some attorneys a thousand dollars per meeting. I don't remember anybody ever talking about this prior to me getting here, but guess what? Doesn't happen anymore. We eliminated several secretaries. We eliminated a whole board, the transportation board, gone. Five hundred dollar salary, a meeting saved, thousand dollars for the, for the attorney saved. You would be shocked, Mr. Cosse, to know that our former town attorney used to make a hundred and forty thousand dollars. I'm not going to comment any further on that, but he used to also grab another thousand dollars per month for meetings that never happened, the historic preservation board. Again, we stopped that, and I thank my council colleagues for doing that. We've actually fired employees. Shockingly, it doesn't really happen in Bellville, but we actually have fired employees. When we did fire employees, most of them have never come back. That's an interesting thing. Some people have talked about, well, maybe I know one or two people that have been hired. I will tell you that I got elected nearly three years ago with two other people. That's three elected officials. I probably have three people that were part of my team, my campaign that work here, and guess what we did? We actually changed titles. So labor in DPW might shock you that prior to me being here, a labor would make forty-eight thousand dollars a year. We thought that was too much money. We created a position called maintenance workers, started at thirty-eight thousand dollars a year. We thought office workers called clerks started at too much money, forty-seven thousand dollars. You know what this council did? We actually deleted that down to about thirty-six thousand dollars. So the new people that I might know their names, they got hired. All got hired at very, very low salaries that replaced sometimes eighty, ninety thousand dollar a year employees. That's just the few things that we did. We also renegotiated one contract that we got a good buyout on. That contract says that any new employees, police, I think, and fire are now going to pay to their health insurance. Again, before me, never happened. That's just a few things that this council collectively, along with me, because I'm here, have actually instituted. I can't imagine where Bellville would be if we actually had this mindset some eighteen years ago when some of us got elected. But I'm glad to see that a lot of us have come along. I'm glad to see a lot of us are bearing down and actually holding the line on budget. I just happen to have a disagreement with one, this one particular issue. There's a whole bunch of other stuff I can talk about tax cutting wise. I'm not going to do that. I'm going to save that for my upcoming state of township speech. But that's just a few things that we've actually done collectively as a council to actually offset the burden to our taxpayers. Thank you for that question. I always appreciate those questions, because I get the chance to explain to people that are also listening as to what this council has actually accomplished.
Excuse me, Mike, I, I, I kind of, I'm trying to get clarification here. Are you saying the police and fire weren't paying? For their, for their.
No, I'm saying, I'm saying that new hires now will pay into retirement. That's what I meant to say.
Won't pay into retirement?
Will, will pay into retirement. They'll, they'll pay for health benefits in retirement when existing ones do not. That's a good move that we did. It wasn't the first time we negotiated a contract, but I'm glad we did it this time around. Okay, there anything else?
Yes, five, just let me know. Last year, my taxes increased six hundred and thirteen dollars. Add to that my water bill that doubled, I'm paying an increase of fifteen hundred dollars a year. If the city of Newark waited over four years on the old one point two million. Why could they not wait a little bit longer till we figured out a way of raising that money? Or wait till we are out of a pandemic crisis?
So we did figure it out a way. Unfortunately, it comes from the taxpayers that. I, I know people don't like when I say this. I've been here for three years. I was not here when that contract stopped. I was not the one that decided to not negotiate that contract for many years. I wasn't here. What I did do when I got here was negotiate that contract. We really, really tried to ask them for good terms. They wanted their money upfront. We are actually paying them off over five years, I believe. And we could not, we had to do that because some of the new development that we're bringing in, that is going to offset your taxes. Needed to open up a water permit, so therefore we need to have a contract in place with Newark Water to actually do that. To get some of these new developments on board, so they could start helping us with our taxes.
Next is from Juan Cologne. He states, I'm writing.
And still, uh, number six. Oh, no, you read that one already.
I read that part already.
Okay, so that talks about a huge apartment complex on the Kmart property. Again, Mr. Cosse, you're, you're a little misinformed. There's absolutely no apartment building going on Kmart. Thank you, though, Mr. Cosse.
Next is from Juan Cologne. He states, I'm writing in regard to the mayor's statement of another tax hike. Tax hike for a second year in a row. I recently bought my first home last year with the intention of staying close to where I work. Already on the first year, my taxes increased six hundred dollars, and the water rate doubled, if not more. I think it is outrageous that this town has such financial issues. And are making residential taxpayers suffer in a time that there are so many hardships, especially with COVID. This year alone, the roads barely plowed, and there is nothing exceptional where our taxes are being put into use. All I see are houses being put up for sale because this town has been so expensive to live in, but nothing to show for. As a concerned homeowner, I too may consider selling what I once considered to be my forever home for my family in these. If these increases keep taking place. I haven't even experienced two years here in Bellville, and I'm already thinking about where else to live. Homeowners should not be held liable and have to suffer tax hikes for the mistakes of financial problems within the town.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. I'm going to urge you to just hold fast here in Bellville. We have a lot of good. Budgetary things that we did this year that are going to pan out, especially with some of the new developments coming in to help offset the tax burden for our taxpayers.
Next is from Ray Lopez. He states, I'm sure you know most of the information my email will cover. But just in case, I would like to share with you some fact checks that I uncovered after reading the mayor's post on Facebook. One, the mayor's claimed that this new software program cost a hundred K is only forty-eight thousand per year. I would say that is a half true.
And I've already addressed that.
Two, the forty-eight thousand software program the mayor is referring to is actually replacing an old out-of-date software program. That the town is already paying for each year, so these funds are not new to Bellville. Another half true.
I would say that, Mr. Ray, you have more information than the mayor does. You have more information than. The Subcommittee in Charge of Construction Code does. I'm not quite sure if you even know the name of the old out-of-date software program, but we're still paying for it. And we're still under contract for it. I think the residents should also know that.
Three, the mayor forgot.
Know about it, Mike. How's that possible?
What's that?
You said we're paying, still paying for it, and you said, just said you didn't know about it. Which one is it?
I didn't know about, wait, I didn't know about what? I think you, you heard me wrong.
Old software. You said you didn't know about the old software, and, and now we're all paying for it.
I know the old software. We have software in place.
And you weren't, you said you weren't aware of it. Mike, let's be serious. Just move forward. Stop, stop being freaking, it's like ridiculous. This is, this is.
You're the one, you're, you're the one interjecting. I'm answering the comments. Next.
I wish you'd do it truthfully.
Three, the mayor forgot, forgot to mention in his Facebook post that the new software will be shared by all the departments. And not just one like the old software that is being replaced.
That's not true. Even Councilman Revelle couldn't name the ten departments that we think, and it's not, it's not all departments. I just want to clarify that.
Four, I understand that these departments in town hall will actually be, be saving time and money for the taxpayers by using this new software. Again, no mention of this information in the post. Another half true.
No mention, because I don't believe it. I don't believe it.
Five, the mayor claims that the purchase of the software would add, would add to a very big deficit. One hundred percent false, because I called a few council members, and there is no very big budget deficit.
Those councilors must know more than the Budget Committee knows.
Six, there is a five million dollar shortfall. Not true. Again, the mayor's trying to paint a fiscal picture. That is not true.
I've already stated on the record that when I made the post, that was the most knowledge I had. The Township Manager agreed to that. That was the most knowledge we had. We have now better knowledge. We are still looking at a increase. There's absolutely no doubt about that. But the average assessed home, I shouldn't say that average, just know for the assessed home between three fifty, maybe four and a quarter. It could still be a couple hundred dollar increase.
Seven, the mayor said that this could be the highest tax increase in Bellville history. Not true. Eight, the mayor speaks without spending unnecessary money on new technology, but nowhere in his post did he mention. The thirty K in public relation firm that was hired last month. Do we really need to spend thirty K on a public relations firm if our budget is so bad?
I think that, that was, that was already backed into last year's budget, which actually had unanimous approval. Interestingly, now that some people are against that, but it's baked into last year's budget, which means that we're currently on a temporary budget. Which means that we're allowed to spend twenty-five percent in the first quarter of the year. That money's already baked in, and I've already said I do stand behind a thirty thousand dollar contract, twenty-nine hundred dollars a month. For positive news stories about what all the good things this mayor and this council are doing collectively.
So this software is baked into it, too. It's part of, it's actually part of prior year budget, and it was actually, like you said, it was a lot, it was a lot higher.
I don't believe it is, and no one's been able to show.
Want to believe or not believe, Mike, it is.
Show me. I'm part of the Budget Committee.
Well, Mike, let's grab the budget. We'll get here, and we'll sit down with all the people and the manager and everybody, and we'll do it. Why would the manager and all our professionals want to do this if it wasn't the appropriate and proper thing for us to do?
I'm going to get to that, Councilman. I'm not quite sure the, all the employees and everybody really wants to do this. I'm, I'm going to get to that, though.
I'm not going to say all the employees. I said professional, Mike. You want to play a little game here? Let's do it. No matter what, you know as well as I do, implementing software takes time, effort, and there is a ramp up. But the benefit, I believe, is going to be there.
I suppose then, if you're saying it's baked into last year's budget, why don't we then, when it comes time, why don't we just table this, and then we'll figure that out? Are you for that?
Look, Mike, if it's in there, we know it's in there, and we know it can do it. You know, you're saying these things, and you did whatever you wanted to do with the, with the freaking public relations thing when, when half the council wasn't even present. So let's, hey, look, we vote on it. When it goes, it goes. If it doesn't go, it doesn't go.
Show me it was in last year's budget?
Huh? You show me.
Table it so you can show me it's in last year's budget?
Mike, you're not going to show me where it's in last year's budget, and you voted on that thing last time, so what, what am I going to do? I'm, I'm being told by the manager and other people, and in fact, you said it, it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and it's going to be less this year. So you're admitting that it was in last year's budget.
No, I did not say that. I said it was signed in December, a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar contract without council approval, signed in December. Do you refute that, Councilman? I'll take that as a no. Do we have?
I don't have that document in front of me. Excuse me, I was muted, but I don't have that document in front of me.
Do you want me to share my screen?
Mike, I don't have it in front of me. So I'm going to say, it would, none of that would have happened, you know, unless we had the money appropriated.
Yeah, that would be, you're, you know what? You're actually correct.
Unless, Mike, you know, you spend more time than I do. So if you're saying it wasn't appropriated, and it wasn't available, and it's not a state contract, then we have a whole nother issue that we need to discuss.
I will, before we vote, and we're going to have this debate before we, we vote, I'm going to ask the CFO. I'm going to show us, I'm going to ask for a certification of funds to prove that we have the money in this year's budget for, and we'll move on from there. Is there, I think there's still number nine, Madam Clerk?
Nine, nowhere in any of his Facebook posts does the mayor mention that he approved two twenty thousand dollar. Pay increases to employees that worked in his political campaign. If our budget is that bad, should we be giving out twenty K increases? Another half true.
That's not true, but, okay.
And ten, stop telling only half, half of the truth. Taxpayers deserve to know the whole truth.
That's very true. Mr. Lopez, you would be shocked to find out that we actually negotiated this contract before the public even heard the public presentation, before I heard the public presentation. You should be shocked at that. The advocate should be shocked at that, but we have none, unfortunately. Next.
Is from Maya Verna. She states, I would like to be on the record, and I'm asking Mayor Melham to give the damn painting back to the library. Such unnecessary energy and bad press to Bellville. Michael Melham should act like a mayor and not an immature child. For the last few meetings, all he did was scare residents into thinking that the town is short five to six million dollars. Today, I called the finance department and found out that no shortfall of money is this year's budget exists. Is the mayor trying to create a software issue to take away from the truth? Please, Mr. Mayor, grow up.
So you are absolutely wrong, Maya. I did not for the last few meetings scare the residents. I sent, I put up a post on Thursday. The Township Manager has already said it was factually accurate at the time. We learned of a slightly different story, but not complete story, the next day. Did not say that for the last call meetings. I'm not quite sure who. I would love to know who in the tax office you talked to that said we are not in a budget crisis. And as far as the painting, that issue has been dealt with and spoken about extensively at the library board meeting. And I think their, their statement currently stands. Next.
Next is Stanley Johnson. He states, following the directions the mayor gave on Facebook, I am writing to the town clerk. Ms. Kavanaugh, and voicing my opinion on the dealings with town hall employees. In every instance, my personal dealings have been nothing but positive. During this year, I had to call the tax office, health office, and construction department. And found the men and women working in these departments have been extremely helpful. My only gripe is that Mayor Melham promised a credit on the town's border bill, and that never happened.
So we did, we did vote twice. The council voted unanimously. I know I, it's, it's always me. I get it. The Township Council voted twice unanimously, the first time in August, to raise the rates based upon our financial people's advice. We then also corrected that by reducing that increase down by twenty-five percent. So I think there was a mention of a potential or maybe a, a credit at that time when I said that we're in the board of, board. The high school auditorium, I did say there may be a credit. No financial person that was there corrected me on that. I did say may. But again, it was the vote of the unanimous council twice to increase, and then a second time to reduce that increase by twenty-five percent. Thank you.
Next is Angelo Russo. He states, can you explain why the public is being asked to participate in straw polls? Did Mayor Melham ask the community to weigh in when he increased our water bill by two hundred percent?
So Angelo, I did not increase your water bill. That was a vote, a unanimous vote of this council. Again, I love, I know people love to pin everything on me, but this was a vote based upon our experts and our financial experts. We're running a two million dollar deficit. They advised the council to increase the rates. That vote was a unanimous vote of the entire council.
I heard that he gave out two very big pay increases to town employees that work for his civic association. Did the public get a chance to vote for these increases?
They did not, because that's just not true. Nobody works for my civic association, and when we say raises, raises. Is the wrong word. When, when employee moves from one position to the next and takes on a, a lot more responsibility, they are entitled to that pay that's in that title. The part that you fail to realize is that this council actually voted to reduce the starting pay of those titles. So we had an employee that was making ninety-four thousand dollars a year for a position. We now have an employee making sixty-eight thousand dollars a year for that same exact position, same responsibility.
I hope this is not going to be the new norm. If the mayor disagrees with the majority of the council, will he then ask residents to participate in a public poll? Next one is from Rich Tymensky. He states, I am writing as a concerned citizen who has seen this town continue to slip under Mayor Melham's watch. Despite his social media post showing a thriving Bellville, which basically consists of a Wawa and a few new stores being built. True progress is more than just making developers happy. Wawa and a proposed Starbucks dinner vote for Melham a few years ago. Myself, myself and other residents did, and we have been fooled and are paying greatly for it. It seems now, as years pass, the mayor has been using a mayor not to better Bellville, but to better himself. I'm starting to lose track of all cringe-worthy news articles I'm seeing as of late. Whether it be from trying to switch the town's electric provider over to a campaign donor. To the mayor claiming that he had the coronavirus before it started in China. Which Chinese media used against the US in a smear campaign and kept mentioning Bellville in almost every article. And now the most recent spectacle with the painting that even my family in South Jersey heard about. To the more recent shady Board of Education deal that is highly a conflict of interest, in my opinion. Which basically just pads his pockets while the rest of the town suffers under his tax water bill increase. Now, on top of this, he's taken to Facebook to make a spectacle, basically begging everyone to email. The town clerk about wasteful spending regarding a hundred K software upgrade, and his budget is short around five million. Which is going to give us another unmanageable tax increase on his watch. So here are my questions. Even though a software upgrade does seem like wasteful spending. When you are short five million on your budget, why are you acting like stopping this one hundred K software upgrade. Will stop the town residents from having another horrible tax increase on your watch? Second, are you making a big deal of this because maybe this is another deal you wanted to benefit yourself or another campaign donor? And being, and being it didn't, you are using us. And being and being it didn't, you are using us to do your bidding because you are using scare tactics on social media and making it seem like this that this is the reason we might get another property tax increase? Lastly, when you claim to make Belville better, how can you do that when all you have done is raised everyone tax, everyone's taxes by thousands in a pandemic, and the water bills have doubled and tripled? No one in this town can afford another increase. You need to stop. You need to stop looking out for yourself and find a way to look out for the residents and make sure we don't pay a penny more.
So, Rich, thank you for your comment. I take it from the bottom up. I need to stop looking out for myself and find a way to look out for the residents. That's exactly what I'm doing here today. I'm don't think that we need to add a hundred thousand dollars over two years to the budget. I just don't think we need to do that. I actually am looking out for you. I love, and again, you're gonna keep hearing this, how everybody says that it's my tax increase and it's my water increase. These were all voted on unanimously by the entire council. I get it. I chaired the meeting, but there's there's probably no way around it, but it's not my doing. I can assure you that all these votes were unanimous. I can assure you that all council members were president. Again, you've mentioned a water, my tax increase and my water bill increases, they're not mine. My budget, certainly not my budgets in the past. I'm gonna tell you, and I rattled off earlier to Mr. Cosse's comments, all the tax saving measures this council has done to fight for you, the taxpayer. We're all taxpayers. Every single member of the council is a taxpayer. We have multiple properties. Some of us, I can assure you, we feel it, too. We have to make the best financial decisions for this, and I think we've as a whole done that. I really do. I just don't understand. There's I I just don't understand the push for this right now. It's just to me, it just doesn't make any sense. Anybody else? That was number thirty. Anybody else?
Yes. The next one is from Helen Gala Rivera. She states, please tell the mayor of Bellville to stop trying to scare residents that our taxes are going through the roof. Yesterday, I called two council members, and I was told by both of them that the taxes are going up less than one hundred dollars per year for average home. I'm tired of reading how bad the municipal budget is when the truth is that the taxes are only going up less than one hundred dollars.
Well, Helen, I do wish we were actually in person, because I would ask you which council members you spoke to that told you taxes are less than a hundred dollars. I'm on the Budget Committee. The Councilman Coserelli is on the Budget Committee. So is Deputy Mayor Graziano. We had our last update only a couple hours ago, so I have no idea who you would have spoken to last week.
Mike, you just admitted that an average household will be about a hundred bucks. Yes, you're correct. If you want to take responsibility for the Board of Ed and all the other stuff, that's great. I get that.
I said I said if the current projections stands, which are using one-time hits and money we don't have, we have a.
One-time hit that can actually be spread over two years and additional hits from that one-time hit, which goes back to two thousand sixteen, a suit that, you know, the prior administration helped us get, so.
Our budget is due in seven days. We do not have the money from the Claremont Settlement. We do not have the federal money, therefore.
But that's great. Then you know what, Mike? You wanna say we're gonna have this. You're gonna do this. What is it, Mike? Are we five million? Are we ten million? Or we're zero? I don't know, Mike, but I'm gonna tell you one thing. Five million, six million, you scared the heck out of people. And and this was all done in specific for your own self-worth of of going out there and deciding, hey, we don't need somebody else's software. We got my software. So the heck with it, you know? Let's get to it.
You have my software? What software do you have in mind?
Don't we use your web software? Isn't that part of what we're we're talking about here?
No. I, you know.
No.
Hard to believe that you've actually served here for the amount of years you have, and you're that unknowledgeable about everything.
Look, I'm not as knowledgeable as you because you've been here like twenty years with this stuff. But there is there is a web interface, and it will replace some of the stuff that you do and hopefully make it better, and that's my whole whole point here.
That's absolutely not why I'm against this, because let me ask you a bizarre question. If it replaces me, how is it I I work with this company in multiple towns?
Well, then, if you work with them, why? What's the problem?
Because I know we can't afford it right now. I know you have a hard.
We can't afford not to do this.
Gotcha. We're gonna discuss that in public in a few minutes.
We already did.
No, no, I think we're gonna have a little more discussion, Councilman. Okay, that was that was Helen's next.
William T. Conklin. He states, I called Town Hall this past Friday, and a very nice woman in the building department told me that the software that the mayor is referring to on his Facebook page is actually software for ten different departments. I was told it is not a hundred thousand dollars, but forty eight thousand per year for two years. Obviously, that's a big difference. Forty eight thousand for ten departments is less than five thousand per department. Why is the mayor trying to confuse the residents of Bellville? Is it because of the increase in the water bill, which has doubled, and he would like us all to forget about that? I hope that's not the case, because May twenty twenty-two, the residents will remind him about that increase.
So I would tell you that it was seven council members that voted for that water tax increase, not just me. That's something that we absolutely had to do. I'm still waiting for a list of the ten departments. We do have. I'm not gonna put them on the spot. We have the police chief here and the fire chief here. It was rattled off that they're included in this. I don't think that's the case, but we're gonna have this debate in just a few minutes when we go to the resolution portion of this bill. And I've already said that it's a hundred thousand dollars over two years. I've been honest with that from the very, very beginning. I don't think it's ten departments at all, not at all.
I think it's actually ten modules, but it's definitely more than three departments.
Gotcha. How's that module for the clerk's office working out with the software? It's been what, two years? We don't tend to evolve when it comes to technology, therefore, it's not usually beneficial to invest a lot of upfront money in technology. And I speak that from somebody in the municipal technology business, by the way. Next.
Next is from Richard Chiron, and he states, I hope this email finds you well. This is in regards to the first ward area behind Claremont and Combesing, Newark Avenue to Mill Street. People drive here like in North Newark in the late eighties. No one stops at stop signs or drives under forty miles per hour. The crosswalks aren't delineated to forget about vehicles yielding to pedestrians. No one uses trash cans, so there are rats abound. Also, people cut through the hospital and drive like an entrance to Ramp Twenty-One or the Garner State Parkway. I've never seen it so bad. Taxpayer since nineteen seventy-eight. My address is sixty-three Sanford Avenue. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Richard, for bringing this up. I'm gonna ask you, Richard, I wish we were in person. I would ask you if you first contacted your first ward councilwoman, Ms. Burke, I would love to get involved and maybe direct a manager to assist this, but I know in the past she has always wanted to to be able to serve her residents first. I don't know if you've contacted her by now. I know she's on this call. I'm gonna assume that she has this public comment in front of her and either herself or or I now that I'm aware of it, I didn't know. I can forward this into the Township Manager to see if he could address it.
Next is from Mario Drawz, ninety-five Bell Street. He states, I know I've asked you four you four times already about the January sixth, twenty twenty-one insurrection in Washington. Any chance you changed your mind and would like to condemn it? Resolution number eight is the same banker who was town manager when he went to office twenty years ago? If yes, is this the same banker who has two family members on the township payroll? Why does this not go out for bid? Is this also the person who made recommended zoning changes and pilot programs?
Actually, there's a couple. There's a couple of different things happening, so let me just hit them as we go. Asked four times about the insurrection. There's seven council members here, Mario. Any one of them can speak out if they want to speak out. Any one of them can do that. I haven't heard anybody else say it, so I don't know why it's always me bearing the brunt of your anger, but there are seven of us up here. Any one of them can speak out if they so choose to. I have not chosen to. Resolution number eight is that same Tom banker. I will say that, and again, Mario, you're factually incorrect. This was published. This was publicized on our website as a public bid. This went out. We received bids, and today we award the contract based upon literally a public bid. So again, Mario, you are grossly uninformed, grossly uninformed.
I see you made some comments about the historic artwork that hangs in your office recently. If I remember during last year's budget meeting, the library returned a hundred thousand dollars from its budget to the township. If the roof needed repairs, as you stated, and you were president of the board, why did you not use the money for repairs?
Great, great comment, Mario. I'm so happy you said this because guess what? The the roof repair costs a hundred fifty thousand dollars. It is a municipal building. It's owned by us. Therefore, this township, this governing body, has to fix it. But you know what the library board's gonna do? They're gonna use their money to fix their own roof. So guess what? They just saved the taxpayers a hundred fifty thousand dollars because we were contemplating bonding for a hundred fifty thousand dollars because it is our building to fix it. But the Library Board of Trustees, the great group of people that they are, have decided that they're gonna pay for it out of their capital money. So great comment, Mario. I really appreciate the opportunity to explain that to to the residents.
Hey, my understanding was we replaced that roof not too long ago. And and the leak that that's now evident didn't happen until maybe like a month or so ago with the snow. I mean, I'm kind of at a at a loss for where that came from.
Want to attend a library board meeting, Councilman, and ask those questions, or you want to contact somebody in the library?
But you were saying you 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 did something about the you. Maybe you can correct me there. Is are you talking about that you guys were talking about this leak in the library board a year ago? When you were we were president of the library board?
I I became aware. When I was president, I became aware of leaks. That's what made us originally, I believe, take the painting down and paint the walls. Never put the painting back up because they kept continuing to leak. We now have gotten as of two meetings ago. And again, I urge you to come to it to a meeting. We had the the boards up there with all the leaks and and the opinions of several roof contractors that that have come out to look at that. So I I'm gonna assume that there's a problem with the leak. I trust the fact that our director says that. I trust the fact that the experts say that. We're obviously gonna.
I know. I think I think we agree. There is a leak. I'm just trying to figure out. I mean, I I remember spending a ton of money on that, or they spending a ton of money on that roof.
I don't think it was done right. I think a lot of things were done incorrectly at that library. Okay, next.
After you got elected as mayor, you noted how great pilot programs were. You have the you have in the past mentioned Jersey City. I will say it again. They do nothing to help school budgets. Last week's news article in the Star Ledger about Jersey City, there was a shortfall again in the school budget. Taxpayers receive a hundred, one thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollar tax increase. Who is the winner here again? Big developers who live in their mansions?
So because Jersey City taxpayers received a tax increase, we shouldn't do part of. I'm not following that logic.
How did you come up with a budget shortfall of five to six million dollars? I attended last year's budget meeting, and our fixed cost is about a million dollars due to contractual obligations. Please be more transparent and stop with your Trump fake news.
Well, I've already explained in nauseam how I came up with the five point six million dollars that has not been refuted by the Township Manager, who said to us exactly what I just said. It was a five five to six million dollar budget deficit the first time we had our Budget Committee meeting. We had absolutely no prior knowledge up until the time after I had made my post. It is looking better now. I do not believe that we are out of the woods yet by any stretch of the imagination.
Next is Emily Pepe. I have always supported changes in order to improve the township for the better. At this very difficult and stressful time with people out of jobs and trying to make ends meet, this is not the time to be voting on additional software for the township. People are struggling to put food on their table and keep a roof over their head. There is something that is so not necessary at this time. We need to keep our taxes down so citizens can remain in their homes. I implore the council to vote no on this endeavor.
Thank you, Ms. Pepe.
And the last one I have is from Nellie.
You say last?
The last one, yes.
All righty.
It is from Nellie Peano Diaz. I would like to thank the Green Team and Boy Scout Troop Fifty Three Fifty for coming together for the Community Garden. This is an amazing project for our community and shows how our township and community can continue to move forward for the betterment of our town. I would also like to thank Councilwoman Naomi for being transparent and sharing her experience when it dealt with leasing space in our town. It is important and vital that we make this process easier for everyone interested in opening businesses and having clear communication and direction is vital. For Earth Day, I would love to see an initiative to clean up the streets between Essex Central and across from Tommy and me. The bins are always full with garbage all the time. We need to address the curve appeal, the curve appeal in the site of the street. This is the first thing our visitors will see when exiting the highway, not a good look for our town. Lastly, I want to know if the manager was able to get through his checklist. As you mentioned, this checklist was given in August. Can you confirm if the Township Manager indeed has an assistant and why this checklist? And why isn't this checklist done? Our taxes are on the line. He has done a great job with the rest of the list, but many things haven't been finalized. As always, thank you, Michael, and Township for all of your efforts.
Thank you, and I appreciate the ending the written comments on a very positive note. That was something that was a nice event this weekend. PAC Three Fifty was there. I'm sorry, Troop Three Fifty was there. With regard to the Green Day initiatives, I think Ms. Gabby Meany will probably add some of those to the agenda, to her Earth Day agenda. With regard to the manager's checklist, I'm gonna assume you're talking about the I had written a letter again in in August, you know, me sounding the budgetary alarm back in August, by the way, not new, prompted the manager to write some budget recommendations. The council accepted them, but I'm not quite sure the council wanted to really go through with all of them, mainly whether or not we pursued any layoffs or whether we pursued any furloughs. I'm not quite sure. We had council buy-in for that stuff. I do know that last meeting he identified two properties. Those were the same two properties that he mentioned in October. I'm not quite sure where we stand on them. I can tell you that the budget is due in seven days. I can tell you that we're probably gonna introduce before the next meeting. I can tell you that those properties will not be on the table to help offset the taxpayers' burden because they're not they're not ready to be sold yet, unless the manager has any update for us.
No update on the additional properties, but I do have, just not to be confusing, I have Mr. Fran Frantoni on the main line who would like to speak, and he can't unmute his phone.
No problem.
But I could.
You might have to translate if we can't hear him, but all right. So let's do this. Let's do this. Madam Clerk, that's it for the written communications?
That is all, Mayor.
Thank you. So normally, from here on, we go to anybody on video. I'm gonna just go right to the manager who's got Mr. Franz Antoni piped in directly to the manager's office. Mr. Franz Antoni, you are up for public commenting. You have five minutes, sir.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Hey, hooray. I am I am not. I am not tech savvy, so you gotta excuse me.
That's okay.
Mr. Mayor, during the meeting, you know, I've always yelled that we need to cut taxes, not only contain them, and you said before you answered one citizen, you said we can't cut taxes. Correctly, if you about twenty minutes ago. Well, I if you give me the a minute to read three sentences.
Sure.
The council notes that spending at the current pace imposes financial difficulties for the citizens of Bellville. The budget must be reduced so as to effectuate an across-the-board tax reduction from municipal expenses. This reduction must be accomplished this year and for each year thereafter. This is a resolution that you signed in September twelfth, two thousand, when the budget was about thirty percent.
Twenty-one years ago?
So this is, you know, when you say they can't, you're one that was sponsoring a resolution to cut taxes, which at the time I agreed with you.
Thank you.
And now, the other thing is, our Resolution Eight. What is the dollar amount for this banker contract?
There's gonna be an hourly amount with it. The residents should know that taxpayers do not pay that hourly rate. Every time we negotiate with a developer, that developer has money put in escrow. Those professional service fees come out of that escrow amount. I don't have the dollar amount directly in front of me, the hourly rate, but taxpayers do not pay it.
Well, why two years ago, you signed a contract with the banker group for the exact same thing that you're saying here, for financial impact analysis, and two years ago for thirty thousand dollars?
That's not true, Mr. Franz Antoni. It's a not to.
It's in front of me. I'm reading it.
But this this is a not to exceed thirty thousand, which means that we front the money and then we take the money from the developer's escrow.
What do you mean developers' escrow? I mean, the taxpayers are paying it.
Mr. Franz Antoni, you're well aware of the fact that developers, when we negotiate with them, put money, whether they're going for the planning board or zoning board or negotiating with us, they put a certain amount of money in escrow. Mr. Frantoni, I know you know that, and that money is used to pay our professional service fees. Mr. Banker is one of those professional service fees.
Well, again, you know, I mean, Mr. Banker, you know where he came from, and I I objected the other day in the paper. I mean, I picked up a paper where the former mayor Kimball died, and then there you, you know, sympathize with his family, and then you said, I worked very closely with Mayor Kimball as a young councilman. That is a lie. Your first your first thing in the office when you were councilman, you guys fired, Mr. Kimball.
True. That is not true. That is not true.
It's a disgrace. And and let me say one more thing.
Your theory is is actually not.
Let me talk on the phone. Let me talk on the phone, but the, the thing is, you also said, a good thing, you says, property, your property values are skyrocketing. And you make it seem like a good thing.
It's a great thing.
Now, and I've had three people, two of them my customers, who bought homes in Belleville at this increased prices. What they were shocked is the next year, their taxes went through the roof. One got a thirty-eight-hundred-dollar increase when they asked why, that your value, your property went up. No, 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 they told them, you paid that amount. So when you talk about skyrocketing property taxes, you're not saying those taxes and the people who buy those houses are going to go through the roof because the assessment and the, on the price you paid for the house. And the last thing, if you recall.
Upon sales price.
Good guy, you can go back, you know all about technology, right? You can go back and research about a year and a half ago, publicly, I told you to cool it with your words because you talk too much. I said, walls are targets, words are targets, and they're going to come back to haunt you. But you like to rattle on for hours at a time, and now the chickens are coming home to roost.
Thank you, Mr.
Please take a little advice, short answers, success for politicians, short answers, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Franz Antoni.
Thank you for putting up with me.
No problem, sir, anytime. Okay, so we've gone now through the written comments. We've gone through one person that's on, we'll call him the first person that was on video. Next thing we're going to do is open up public participation to anybody that's on video. I see Ms. Carmella Fleishman, you're up, ma'am.
I was going to say, I was going to feel unloved there for a minute there, Mr. Mayor. Good evening.
Mr. Antoni comes first.
Huh?
Mr. Franz Antoni comes first.
Very good. Okay, I'm thrilled to hear that next meeting will be in public. Well, solution, wait, wait, sorry, resolution will be offered to be in public, which is great. Um, I called the office, your office the other day after speaking to the Essex County Public Works in regards to the cleanup of said Main Street. Told that Main Street is not a county road, it is a town road. I spoke to a young lady named Ashley, very nice, in the county's office. She gave me a list of the county roads in Belleville, she gave me a list of the county roads in Nutley. Because I wrongly thought that since it was Main Street and kind of went through both towns, I know one side's River Road, one side's Main Street, but I wasn't sure if it was all together. So I would like to find out how and when Main Street will be cleaned up because it's atrocious. And with the lovely new leadles coming in, I know the town council and the mayor doesn't want people to be coming down Main Street and coming down River Road, which they just paved on the Nutley side, nice job they did, um, into leadles and seeing all that garbage. I know that's not the image that the town wants to represent, I know that. Um, and it's very interesting to hear the mayor and the council have such heated discussions for once and about other topics. I find it extremely interesting that all of a sudden, for years, you never really argued, you ne, you never had a bitch fest. So I'm just kind of curious, who's up for reelection first? Either Mr. Mr. Revel or Mr. Mayor?
Me.
Because I personally think that it was all, you both deserve Academy Awards personally, so that's.
But I'm not up for election, I don't need it.
Okay, well, that's good to know. All right, like I said, I don't agree with the increase of whatever the amount is of the software. And if the software works, fine. You know, I find it just really interesting. So, so many people have, you know, gotten on this hot button topic, found it extremely interesting. That's all. Thank you.
So, Mr. Iacono, Mr. Police Chief, and Mr. DPW, again, we have three people on this call that can address the Main Street issue. When you spoke last meeting, I thought you were talking about the on-ramps, which is why I said I thought it was state. I thought you were talking about, now you're specifically talking about the street. I'm going to reiterate my request or your request to the manager and/or the assistant manager and/or DPW director to look at Main Street and figure out what we can do about that. And I'm, and you know, listen, I've always said, this council collectively has accomplished a heck of a lot. And it's, it's probably a testament to us that you don't see us hotly debate more topics, but because we actually do get along and have accomplished a lot. This particular instance is something that I've actually thought that I didn't like the way it was handled. I don't think it's the right time. It's got nothing to do with an election year because I just sat here all night and defended a thirty-thousand-dollar contract for public relations. So it's got nothing to do with picking little bits and pieces here. I truly just don't think that this was done appropriately. I don't think it was the right time. I don't think it was handled the way we've handled every other contract of this nature in the past. But we're going to have that debate in a few minutes. I don't want to bore anybody else with this during public commenting.
All righty.
Do we have anybody else here that's on video? We've gone through written, we've, we're into video. I'm looking for hands, I have multiple screens here, I do see a hand, Mr. Nucci. Can I ask you, just unmute yourself, sir? You're muted. There you go.
Is that better? Okay. Good evening. Um, I just want to update on the four-way stop you, 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 the council passed last December. And when does the leaf bags get picked up again?
Sure, so the, you asked that question a couple of meetings ago, and the answer that we both received, again, I don't, I don't go install them, the answer that we both received was because of the snow. I'm going to venture to guess there's no more snow in that intersection. So I'm going to ask if, I don't know if our police chief is ready, willing, and able to comment on this. If not, I'm sure him or the manager are making a note to discuss and to figure out where that four-way stops. And I know you've mentioned this repeatedly, I know the last time we gave you an answer was because of snow.
Yes, I, I agree, it was, it was this, it was the snow in the last few weeks, it was beautiful weather, so I just, just wondering. All right, updates, that's all.
So I'm going to assume either the manager or the chief can speak to it. If not, I'm assuming that one of them will, will, will address it. Chief, are you there?
Yes, my mayor, the signs had to be ordered, and that's going to be installed very, very soon.
Gotcha. These are situations, Mr. Nucci, that you and I have no idea are going on behind the scenes, but a lack of signs is probably a valid reason as to.
Oh, I agree.
I'm certain that as soon as the chief gets them in, we will have them in the ground. With regard to leaf pickups, I'm assuming that might coincide with the street sweeper. Mr. Manager, if you could weigh in on that?
That is correct, that's Monday, March 5th.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, April, April 5th, Monday, April 5th.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Nucci. So we are almost done with anybody on video. I do not see anybody else waving to me on video, so.
I do have a hand up.
Oh, a hand, is that a digital hand?
I says I'm waving.
Oh, so, okay. You are, oh, I, I was telling, we, we usually go to video people first, and then we go to people that are not on video, but sure.
Here you go. There.
There you go.
There you go, thank you, Mayor. I, I think it's important, I'm Mike Sapienza, a representative of GovPilot, to maybe clear up a couple of things real quickly because I feel like the residents are completely in the dark on what the software is. To them, it's just software. I think it's important to note that one of the reasons they don't see the need or don't understand to change softwares is there's currently nothing in any of the current software that's public facing. So there's nothing to benefit them currently. There's no online payment abilities, online digital forms, pet licensing and permitting, and Oprah requests that are very time-consuming for both the resident and the, and the staff. We all.
Let me just stop you, I mean, I know you're not a resident of Belleville, but we actually do have front-facing software in other departments. That might be what you meant to say, we can make online payments for water, for taxes through admin system.
You're correct.
You probably know that admins is actually scalable to actually offer some construction software. The argument I think that I had was just the fact that I don't think that we really explored everything we should have explored in, in this, in this venture. But you still have a few minutes, go ahead.
Understood, so that is something that we will be often offering front-facing that the residents aren't currently seeing. The other aspect to that front-facing, which is a huge benefit and has shined the light so brightly in the last year, is this allows for the social distancing, the staff not in front of constituents, residents being able to do so many more things online. This is not just a construction permitting software. This does many different functions, so things they're having to mail in checks, go to the office, bring in plans, all that can go away with a system like this. So when social distancing, like right now we're on Zoom meetings because up until maybe the next meeting, for the last seven or eight months, people are not supposed to be gathered, even in small numbers. So it plays into that as well, but I think a good point to make is one of the big things that you've made a great point on actually lends to what our software platform can do. You're letting tenured employees leave, retiring, maybe being terminated. Our system and the efficiencies it creates with automation and being digital will allow you to not have to replace a lot of those people. The, the savings for one employee could outweigh the cost of this system in six months. So it, it will easily do that, and we have case studies in other New Jersey towns that are posted on our website that clearly show that. I mean, I could name a number of them, but you know, that can be looked at, that were conducted to show, hey, we didn't need this many more people in this department, we moved them somewhere else. We save this much time with this employee in this department every day of every week. So it, it, it really lends to the case you're making for streamlining and cutting the costs that are in that budget every year. And it also lends to the residents who, they don't see anything that's public facing right now. So yeah, if I were the residents, I'd say, what, what are you changing? It's not helping us because what you have right now is not helping you. And this system would drastically bring Belleville from the processes that are pretty antiquated into the 21st century, like a lot of other New Jersey towns like Trenton and, you know, other big places like Atlantic City and many smaller towns, you know, that are surrounding you guys. So I just want to make that point so that everybody can kind of see there, there's a lot more to it than just software, you know, to make a couple of people's lives better. Thanks for your time.
Right, and I, I appreciate that, and I will just add to that, that the two other software companies that we've replaced in the last five years also have online capabilities and are also front-facing. So, and again, nothing against GovPilot, I, 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 you know, nothing at all against the company about the service, the product, nothing. It's got nothing to do with that, in my opinion, this is a budgetary issue and a process issue for me, as you've probably heard. Okay, do we have anybody else that's on video? I'm still going to try and end with the videos. I don't see anybody else waving to me on video. So I'm going to ask anybody that's not on video, if you want to unmute yourself and actually speak. You have five minutes to speak on the record.
Michael Sheldon.
Okay, Mr. Sheldon, you have five minutes, sir.
Yeah, thank you, I'd like to weigh in briefly on the GovPilot situation. The revelations earlier this evening about the finances really changes the calculus. We're not dealing with a five to six million dollar deficit. The software doesn't cost a hundred thousand dollars a year, it's been repeatedly stated throughout the evening. The software is forty-eight thousand dollars a year. And as a relative measure, you know, you, Mr. Mellem, are getting thirty-six thousand dollars a year from the Board of Ed to use part of your building on Union Avenue. So, you know, relative scale, I don't see the forty-eight thousand as a huge unnecessary expense, especially considering what the representative GovPilot has promised. Now, if I remember correctly, three years ago when you were running for mayor, you repeatedly advertised how you were going to bring a new product to Belleville, which was comparable to GovPilot. You called it your Mayor's Action Center, and you said it would allow residents 24/7 to submit requests for help. They would then be able to follow, track the progress of their requests through the town hall hierarchy. You promised improvement in workflow efficiencies. Three years have passed by, where's the product? Does it even exist?
Right there, it's actually an address for the Mayor's Action Center. The one thing I didn't anticipate, so I have a document that talked about a lot of the promises that I made when I was going to get elected. We've actually accomplished about ninety percent of them, and this one here is done on my business card here. It's actually got a URL to a Mayor's Action Center. Here's the one thing I didn't realize. I didn't realize that when I got here in 2018, the email system would be so antiquated that we could not send email throughout this town. That only got corrected a few months ago. This council, again, made a substantial improvement, so I have a Mayor's Action Center there. The problem is, we could not get emails two minutes will step because they didn't have email. Shockingly, that they didn't have email only about two years ago. They couldn't get it on their phone, they couldn't get it on Outlook, they just couldn't get it. But now we're going light years ahead. Now, so it's right there, right there.
Well, I see it on a card, but where is it on the website? I don't remember seeing it advertised anywhere on the township website.
We just got email about three or four months ago in this town.
Just three or four months, because I remember Mr. Graziano boasting over a year ago that long last, you'd finally upgraded from Windows 95 to Windows 10. You were running Windows Server, the modern version of Windows Server. So I don't, I, I would look back at the timeline, but this, I'm glad to know that the Mayor's Action Center exists in some form because I would like to see it.
NJ.Mayor'sActionCenter.com, double NJ.Mayor'sActionCenter.com.
All right, I'll look into it later tonight.
Give me your time, though, go ahead.
Well, you just spoke for a few minutes, so I want to reclaim my time. I, I want, I want five minutes actually to speak, not two minutes versus your three minutes of response. You can respond at the end. There's been some criticism again tonight about hirings, patronage, family members, et cetera. I recently learned that Mr. Belnomy, who works in the DPW, who was hired shortly after you became mayor, is actually your cousin. He's, he's related to you. So this is yet another person within your immediate sphere who has deriving benefits as your role as mayor. It also begs.
Wait to call you a liar, or should I let you continue?
Yes or no, well, no, yes or no, you, just quick at this point, yes or no, is Mr. Belnomy your cousin?
No.
Is he, has any familial relationship to you?
No. Wrong, again, Mr. Sheldon.
All right, I mean, this is the only place I can ask you these questions, so I'm, I'm giving you a chance to set the record straight because I've heard from people who have been in Belleville for decades, no family relationships, that he was related to you.
Continue to eat away at your time with a lie that I've already disproven, go ahead.
No, it's not disproved, I wanted you to correct the record. I gave you a chance to say yes or no, is he related to you? And you said no, thank you for that information. I'm not accusing you of lying, you shouldn't be accusing me of lying. I was just asking you for that information.
You have another minute, plus another minute after that, Mr. Sheldon.
All right, so let me get to the last topic, and that is the painting matter. I, I assume that you're enjoying your last evening with the landscape of Belleville hanging behind you. As you're aware at this moment, Mr. Perone told you at last week's trustees meeting at the Bellevle Public Library that you had seven days to return the painting or else. If you, if the painting is not back in the library by 4:00 PM tomorrow, Mr. Perone and Mr. Hatch, who's one of the descendants of Josiah Hornblower, are going to state authorities and filing a criminal complaint against you with the intention of having you arrested for second-degree felony theft, theft of, of property that does not belong to you. Now, over the last couple of weeks, you've given ever-changing stories about why you appropriated the painting. First, it was just the will of the library board, they wanted you to have it. But the resolution last June was introduced by you. And yes, they, they voted unanimously for it, but most of those trustees are your appointees. Then you, then you changed the story that there was a leak and that you were safeguarding the painting. I have acts, I have all of the minutes from last year's library board meetings, not one. Would you please let, you took some of my time, I would like to finish this last point.
I said you have an extra minute.
Well, I just got muted, I just got turned, I got turned off here.
I didn't mute you.
Someone did. All right, so if you look at all the minutes of the library board meetings last year, not once was there ever any discussion of a leaking, a roof, leaking windows, et cetera. The leak only developed as of February, after we had that bad snowstorm on February 1st and 2nd. So we, and, and so you remove, you even admitted on your own page that you have had the, the painting in your office for the last nine months. We have both video and photographic evidence that the painting was gone from the library as of mid-July of last year. So you, you, every time you're confronted about this, there's a new, new story, and now.
Sheldon, thank you.
Yeah, well, I, I look for you, I look forward to you being arrested. It's the publicity you deserve at long last.
Thank you, sir. Okay, you enjoy your evening? Anybody else that's on audio? Just going to ask you to unmute yourself, state your name and address for the record. It's been a long and entertaining night. We probably broke a record for public comments, seeing none, hearing none, I'm an entertaining motion to close public commenting. Unmute yourselves, council.
Motion closed.
Second. I heard a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, everybody, we are out of public commenting. We're moving. Okay, everybody, we are out of public commenting. We're moving in. We're closing in on nine o'clock, everybody. We're going to get this done. We're paying Mr. Martino overtime today. No, all right, we're actually not, so.
No, you're not.
You're not. Okay, so consent agenda. Anybody have anything to pull off? Do we have anything? I have item five, seven, nine.
Mayor, I'd like to pull 15, please.
Sure.
I'd like to pull eight.
Sure. You can sell that one, yeah.
Five, seven, eight, nine, and 15.
Anybody else on the council have an issue with anything else? Hearing none? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to move the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second. Motion made. Second clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattori.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Trumlo Burke. Mayor Melham.
Yes. All right, I pulled item number five. I have consistently said since last August, as I've consistently since last August, sounded the alarm for the municipal tax budget and municipal tax increase, that I was not going to vote for a temporary emergency budget. Being that we are planning on introducing the agenda, I'm sorry, the budget on time, which normally would be the last meeting in March, but they have allowed us to do it the first meeting in April. I'm okay with this. Again, this will be the first time in a long history that this council, this governing body, this township has a budget issued on time. We all should be commended by that. Ms. Fleishman, you'll be happy to note that even next year, when I run for reelection, I'm going to mention the fact that we got a budget done on time. And I'm going to mention the fact that we got a budget done on time next year, too, even though it's going to be before my election. How about that for everybody? All right. Congratulations, council. We finally are going to get it done, I think, for the next meeting. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll.
Make a, I'm going to make a motion to move five.
Yes.
Motion made. Second clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattori.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Trumlo Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. All right. I also pulled on the number seven. I know it's getting late, so we're not going to belabor this. The manager was going to try and do a presentation. Again, this council got it done. This council took a okay plan, in my opinion, made it a great plan. We have two new turf fields coming. We have lighting coming. We have a brand new baseball field, multi-use field coming down there as well. Great project. I'm hoping that maybe the manager for next meeting during the caucus can actually do a little presentation. But again, no taxpayer money from this year. We used $2 million of green acre money and $3.5 million in the previous bond. That bond will be taken down a little bit each year, of course, but that's what we normally do. Again, a landmark project for the township of Belleville, something we should be proud about. Eight lane competitive track coming, two new fields, two new turf fields in conjunction with number eight school will be three turf fields in this town. We only had one about three years ago. Great job. Everybody, I think we did an excellent job. Great job to the members of our committee on that. That's it. Clerk, call the roll. I'm sorry, I need a motion.
Move seven.
Second.
Motion made. Second clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena. Graziano.
Yes.
Nattori.
Yes.
Trumlo Burke. Mayor Melham.
I say yes to it.
All right, Councilmember Rovell, number eight.
I'm just a quick question for you. This went out RFP, correct?
Yes.
And how many people responded?
I don't collect the responses. Maybe the manager knows.
One.
I mean, do we really want to take this one? I mean, I know we've done this before, but you know.
I'm okay with it. And he's not a cousin of mine.
He's not. You sure?
I'm positive.
Hey.
I, I, I mentioned it before, not paid for by, I think, total for some strange reason. Since 2018, we have paid Mr. Banker $2,700. I don't know how that even happened, but the overwhelming amount of his fees are paid for by developers that put money in escrow.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to move it.
Second.
Motion made. Second clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattori.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Trumlo Burke.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes. Guess the motion carries. Item number nine.
Make a motion to move nine.
Second.
So we have a motion made. There goes discussion. So now do we have discussion on this?
Mayor, I, I know that there's been a lot of discussion in this regard back and forth. And I was very grateful to have experienced the, the presentation in regards to what the, this software actually provides. I'm one that would always support anything that makes the job easier, anything that allows opportunities for, for people to do this from home, limiting the social distancing. I love everything that brings us there, closer to that goal. My only issue in regards to voting with the information that I have right now is that I have not, I have not had the opportunity to see what we have now. You know, we were able to be given a presentation with what we could have, but we currently have a software. And what I would love to see is the opportunity to compare both, both programs, see what we actually are getting that we don't currently have, and what the difference in pricing would be. Because I think that in order to make a decision, those are two things that I need to have. And I currently wouldn't feel comfortable making a decision voting forward with this unless I had that information. So I don't know if that's something that our township manager might be able to provide us. I know that, you know, we currently have a software, but I do believe that it's a responsibility to know what the difference will be in regards to the cost.
That's Mr. Manager.
Yeah, just, just go ahead and repeat that question. I'm sorry, Naomi.
Yeah, so I saw what the capabilities are of this software, and I do believe that it's, it's great. However, what I'm not aware is what the capabilities of the software we currently have. And I'm sorry, I think someone is unmuted. And also, what's the difference? What's the, the cost difference based on the new capabilities that we have in terms of the program we currently have going on?
So presently, we spent $18,000 on municipal city, which was in the original public works budget. There's two other softwares in the health department that we will be not renewing because GovPilot does this. The question that comes down to, hang on one second. The question that comes down to is the 10 marginals that we are, we, which we are not doing now. The, the 10 marginals are construction, animal license, asset management, business registration, open record, public request, planning and zoning board, CCO rental properties, report of concern, work orders, and fleet management. So those are the 10 marginals that will be administered in, in the various departments. So to answer your question, the municipal city, which we did not renew this year, we paid $18,000 for the last two years. There's two other small contracts that we're not going to renew in the health department. I think they were either 500 or 1,000 each.
Doesn't really compare to 48,000, but councilwoman, do you have anything else there?
Not now.
Okay. So I, I've kind of already said my piece to nauseam on this.
I would like to share some information, Mayor, if I get a chance.
Sure. You want me to go first? Do you want to go first?
No, if you don't mind, can I go?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So I came to do my homework on, on this product. I actually met with, I had a Zoom meeting with town manager and the gentleman from GovPilot. Very interesting product, nice webinar, nice interface, nice bells and whistles. Product is good. Okay. But then I did some other homework on basically municipal city, like the town manager said. And we, hey, I believe, correct me, manager, we did pay for that this year, so we're committed that this year for the 10 licenses plus the maintenance.
So what did you say? We, I'm sorry.
I believe we're committed already this year to that municipal city for the 18,000.
No, no, we're not paying that 18,000.
Okay, well, let's see that. So now-
You're, you're, you're sure of the fact that we have not paid that, that renewal for this year? You're muted. You're muted.
Well, that's, that's, that's okay. So I just, so I'm just, I want to get this out with functionality, right? So now what we currently have, and no one ever talked about it, is we've had it in here. And again, I met with this third party, our, our other software package, which is called Admins. And Admins, we currently pay $33,000 a year that we committed to, and we have it this year. And we use it across all our different departments. We use it in health and I'm sorry, yeah, health and animal. We have a module there. I'm going to call them modules and some will call them widgets. We use it in purchasing department. We use it in the finance department. We use it in the real estate. We use it also for utility billing for the, for the tax and utilities. That said, we have a base, the core of the system is there. It has all the data that we use today. It is in AWS. It's in the cloud. It's there. My question comes to technically is, and financially, why are we looking to spend $48,000 this year on top of the 33, when after having a webinar with Admins, they do provide an Oprah widget and they provide a CPCE widget, which is code permits and code enforcement. And that also will give us the widget for, they call it an APR, which is a whip that we use for utilities and tax billing via credit card. So my question is, as Councilwoman alluded to, not having and doing a really stare and compare across when this product is already in, in Belleville. It's been here for 20 years. My, you know, when we start looking at dollars, we've already committed to 33. What are the difference with the two widgets? I haven't had the time to get that because I was only brought up to this on the last meeting like everybody else was. But I, you know, I did my due diligence since. So we have two widgets and you do a stare and compare and we go from there. And again, municipal city, that's currently being used. Right now it's used. And then, and, and then, and then if we, if we were to go with GovPilot, it's a transition. So we're now we're carrying 33, if that's what it's going to replace. We're carrying GovPilot, so you're carrying 88, $90,000. And who's to say-
I believe you're incorrect, Mike. I mean, both of you are incorrect there. So what we're doing is we're replacing municipal city, which is 18,000 with a 48,000. Admins will stay because there's certain things that Admins does that, that this does not do, to my understanding of it.
Not true, Steve. Not true.
And you know as well as I do, data conversion and all the other stuff, it would be really expensive to convert that one over to us. So as far as I'm concerned at this point, you know what? You guys want to play with numbers? I'm going to tell you, you spent $36,000 on a public relations firm that buys us nothing, that does not buy a community anything. This can help people if we do it properly. So that's my argument.
I'm not, this is not an argument. I'm just-
Tommy, can I just, can I just?
Can I, can I finish? I'm just stating fact that I-
I'm trying to get it finished, Tommy. So this is a discussion. Councilwoman DePena said her piece. I'm going to allow the deputy mayor's speech without interruption, and then we'll let Councilwoman Rovell speak if he wants to speak.
I apologize.
No, that's okay, Steve. I didn't, that's, it's a great discussion, but I understand. And I'm just looking at it from, again, taxpayer, a conversion, the cost is the cost. I get it. But we have something on site. Every town employee uses this. We're not getting rid of the purchasing module. We're not getting rid of the utility. We're not getting rid of the portal for the taxes and the water bill. So our data sits in the cloud block, lot, all of that information that if we do migrate, it's going to have to get over that way. And, and I just want to make it clear to everybody that we'll be carrying extra cost, a double cost, because eventually we're going to go to one platform, right? Because that's the way technology is. And I heard the gentleman, Michael, say before, one platform, whether, whatever what platform it is, it's going to help every employee once they adopt it and use it. So alls I'm saying is, I think it would be nice to take a step back and look at both and do a really good stare and compare. Because alls we have to do is add a couple of modules instead of revamping the whole solution in this time of the budget. That's all. And I just wanted to bring that forward because I did my homework. I did it. And I had meetings on the 15th to 27th and everything in between. And I wanted to share what I've learned with everybody on the council. That's it.
Thank you. I, I would have liked to have this kind of debate while we were debating uses and stuff. Let me ask you just a question, Mr. Manager. Do we have at least a department head here to explain to us why he thinks he needs this? And what, maybe what this does that the current software provider does not do?
I mean, listen, I didn't really want to put Kelly on the spot, but we did you-
It's, it's not, I'm looking for the, the main crux here seems to be construction code and permitting and stuff like that. Do we have?
No, actually, believe it or not, I think, I think that what brought, brought us over to the top with this program was the fact that-
I didn't ask you what brought you over the top. I asked you if we have the director here from construction code.
No, we just have the director from the clerk's office.
But we're replacing Muni City, which is actually construction code software. So I would love to ask him if he was here, what's wrong with Muni City? What are the pain points with Muni City? I would love to evaluate why we can't keep or, or upgrade Muni City. I'd like to ask all those questions, which is normally what we do. So I know there's been a lot of talk about public relations. I sent Councilwoman Rovell an email last week of when we actually debated public relations and how the vendor stood before us months before the contract, by the way, and actually presented to us. And we've already discussed the fact that he voted yes on that at that time. So we had a real debate. We had multiple vendors come in. We had Vision Media come in. For those of you who are keeping track of my political contributions and my political life, Vision Media actually ran my, my, my campaign. But interestingly, even though Vision Media presented to us our public relations and Jaffe did, we landed on Jaffe. So that's an interesting part. That's the kind of stuff that happens when you bring in multiple vendors and you understand the pain points. I don't know what the pain points are in construction code. I don't have the director here to ask. I don't have the employees that have been asking us for support. I don't have any of that. I have 32 negative comments from residents. We never heard anything. The Subcommittee on Construction Code never heard a need for software. Never came about. I, I urge every single council member here to go back to March 10th. The meeting is on the website. Listen to us talk to this department head and listen to the questions we ask him. And I said multiple times, what is it you need? New software never came about. Online credit card transactions never came about. None of this was ever needed yet. It just seems like this thing fell out of the sky. Do we have the CFO here, Mr. Manager, to see if we have a certification of funds to actually pay the $48,000 this year?
So the Kim is on the phone, but just so you know, it doesn't require a certification of funds.
Okay, I think public purchasing laws might differ with you.
That's not true.
Okay.
It's, it's actually in the budget.
I'm still waiting to see it in last year's budget. So I mean, I think-
It wasn't, and we, it's, it was in last year's budget under ONE of the construction department, which we actually reduced it this year. And I think Kim is on the phone, but I think what we're going to do is we're going to divide-
Look at that line I'm saying for, what did it say? Said new software?
No, we replaced, we replaced it. And again, I think you could check with Kim because she is on the phone, but I think we're going to take the 48,000 and divide it among seven or eight departments.
Okay. Okay. And has any councilor had any conversation with, I, I know this is a done deal already, but we've already had two other software providers. We have Spatial Data Logic. I incorporate with that. I would have loved to brought, I would have loved to have a real legitimate, open conversation and had GovPilot in, had Spatial Data Logic in, which is another competitor that we got rid of three years ago, brought in Muni City, and I would have loved to hear what the concerns are of the staff. I would have loved to hear the concerns of the department head and actually let us make a decision as to whether or not we're willing to spend more money for something that, you know, us to make that decision. I get it. This decision was done long ago, which is why we were negotiating. The advocates are, are, their silence is deafening the fact that we went into executive session last meeting to negotiate this ahead of the presentation. The silence is deafening from the advocates that are out there. But apparently they know I'm against it, so therefore they must be for. I get how this works.
Just one last thing to, one last thing. So also, I also found out, we're just working through the process that in 2018, we had municipal city. And I would stand right to say, not stand right, I would ask to say, why didn't we look at Admins before going to municipal city? Right? So the one before that, I don't know. Why didn't we look at that widget? Why, why are we looking to always change? And I get it. Times change. I get it. You look at it, but when you want to- And I get it, times change. I get it. You look at it, but when you wanna change, you have to stare and compare. I believe you need to stare and compare and and do your diligence. And again, I only keep hearing Mission City, Municipal City, and GovPilot, keep Edmonds in mind. They're a player. We have them. It's developed. Our data is there.
I hate to tell you, but they were never in mind here.
I know, but I'm saying we
They're a very expensive player and and would be extremely expensive for us to deal with. That's
Do we know why? Do we know why we lost? We lost Spatial Data Logic? Does anybody know why? Great vendor, by the way. They're in 200 municipalities.
They they evidently had some issues, but I mean, I I go, if I can talk.
Sure, you too.
So for me, part of the, part of the issue is like anything else. I'm going by what I believe that department, some of the department heads and some of the other people are looking for, including the manager. And and I I have confidence in in our professionals, and I think they've done a great job with our budget especially. At this point, um, you know, I I think that the software, based upon what I'm seeing, including pieces like the asset management, the fleet management, things like that, we weren't really doing. And and we need to better communicate with our fleet because we see stuff moving around, but we're not keeping track of it. In fact, if you look at the back of our our audit, you'll see that one of the things that that they have basically recommended that we do is, you know, take a look, a better look at asset management and do it better. And I think that's that's one of the reasons why I think this would help us, but
Okay, there's anybody else have anything to add? We have not heard from Councilwoman Burke or Councilwoman Nattori at all?
No, well, I spoke to, can you hear me? I spoke with the manager. We have had conversations on this. And the manager seems very in favor of this program, and he feels that it's gonna help several departments. He didn't say 10. So I was basing it on that.
Okay.
You know, my conversations with him regarding the program.
Alright, Councilwoman Burke.
What? Could you, could you hear Marie? Could Marie's, go ahead.
No, I can't hear her.
I said we could go with this to jump pilot.
Alright, she's all in, okay.
All in.
Thank you, Marie.
So is there any consideration to maybe hitting the pause button here and actually trying to see if we can get other vendors in to make sure we're getting the right? I I would really wanna, I, it would be a tragedy to be doing this another year or so with another company because we we've done this now three times out of five years, probably because this has been the process. It's gonna be
I think our professionals have done the due diligence and based upon what I'm seeing and and some of the stuff that I've seen over the
Did they do their due diligence the last two times?
No, I, you know what? I think they did in certain cases, but you know as well as I do, Michael, technology changes as do other things. And you know, I mean, two years ago, you know, we didn't even have cloud stuff in the army. Now, now everybody keeps talking about cloud that. And and just so you know, there's an argument going on in the army right now as to which cloud we're gonna use. So I, you know, it's kind of an interesting thing to watch government work, but
Alright.
I have faith in our profession.
Sounds like everybody knows where they wanna go. Uh, does anybody have anything to add? If not, we have a motion made and second on the table to call the question that led us to discussion. I believe now discussion's over. If nobody has anything else to say, I'm gonna ask the clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
No.
Graziano.
Nope.
I I didn't hear Councilman Graziano.
No, he said no.
No.
Thank you. Nattori.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Schumalo Burke. Mayor Melham.
No.
The the resolution is approved.
Alright, next item on our agenda, I'm sorry, we, I I almost forgot, Councilwoman DePena's item number 15.
Yes, I wanted to pull it. It's April 2nd is, we won't be having a meeting until then, but it's a National Autism Awareness Day. And I'm a special education teacher. I've worked with children in the autism spectrum. I just wanted to acknowledge the parents, the families, in the way that this affects the families. One in every 32 children, 32 children in New Jersey is affected by autism. And that day, I just encourage everyone to wear blue. I am also wanted to ask the manager if we might be able to have our light bulbs in town hall like we've done in the past. So that's it.
Thank you.
Naomi, that's a, that's great. I actually donated a case of bulbs to the DPW. I gave them blue ones for this and pink for cancer, breast cancer in, uh, what is that, October? So I gave our director, I don't know if he's still on or not, but he's got a brand new case of them from Home Depot, so hopefully, uh, they didn't all break.
Great.
Alrighty, so, uh,
Need to move that?
Yes, you need to call
Did you wanna do that, Councilwoman DePena?
Um, okay.
That sounds like a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Councilwoman DePena and second clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena. Graziano.
Yes.
Nattori.
Yes.
Rovell.
Yes.
Schumalo Burke. Mayor Melham.
Yes. Okay, so we are new business.
I got one, one thing for new business, Mayor, if no one else has anything.
I got one quick thing, but you go first, Vinnie.
Alright, uh, we, uh, we lost a a good person the other day, Mayor. He was friends with me and you. Actually, he was in the Purple Heart. Yeah. Unit at the American Legion. He was on the meetings with us about doing that little bit of Purple Heart stuff we were gonna do in Belleville. John Bizera passed away suddenly next week. Great guy, always had all the American Allegion events. Really good guy, just so if you all could keep his family in your prayers.
For for sure. Good guy.
Councilwoman Rovell.
Yeah, just real quick, you you brought up Jersey Sting last week, and I, and that's always been an interesting topic to me because Mayor Ray Kimball and the the council, the council at that point in time were one of the few that were able to, you know, deal with the temptations of one side of the black. And I just wanna acknowledge Ray for that because he was, he was a great mayor as well.
Absolutely. I I've always said it. I think the the mayor's cop instincts kicked in at that moment. He knew something was up. He did the right thing, got walked out of
You know, and luckily, I couldn't make that meeting, so. The Lord was with me there.
Alright, that looks like it's all for new business, boys and girls. I appreciate everybody being here. I know it was a long one. Apologize, but open and free debate is always a good thing. So I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion so moved.
And second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, everybody. Thank you.